Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we'll get going. I think Jackie's on her way in as well. It looks like when Cam's ready, we'll open the meeting and get things moving. We've got a busy agenda. So I'll open the October 19th meeting of the Winchester Select Board. My name is Michael Bentencorius, Service Chair. Joining me tonight are Vice Chair Susan Verdicchio, Select Board Members Mariano Golubov and Jackie Welch. Hey Jackie, how are you? Can you hear us okay? And Town Manager Lisa Wong. We have a busy agenda, as I mentioned earlier. Our next meeting is actually next Monday at 7:30. We don't have other meetings scheduled except for the upcoming town meeting. And I believe that Amy's going to be joining us as well soon. So we'll get started with our first item on the agenda, the acceptance of donations. We'll take a motion to accept a donation to the Coalition for Safer Community.
So I move we accept with gratitude a donation of $579.41 to the Winchester Coalition for Safer Community to be put towards their educational programs, and this is donated by Nelson Aquino.
Second.
Great. And we accept that with much gratitude as well to Nelson Aquino. And all in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Susan?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, I'll see if there are any matters from the audience. Anything that is not otherwise on our agenda for the evening, we'll hear from anyone that is waiting to speak. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the Town Manager's report and associated comments.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few appointments that I want to start off with. So the first is a regular full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works Transfer Station Scale Operator of Adam Porter from Nashua, New Hampshire to a W-12 Transfer Station Scale Operator position, and asking the board to waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
So I move that we waive the customary 15-day waiting period for the appointment of Adam Porter to the DPW.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Susan?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously four to zero.
The second one is a promotional full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works Water and Sewer Department for Max Meaney in Winchester to a W-14 Maintenance Foreman, also asking to waive the 15-day appointment period.
I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for the appointment of the promotional appointment of Max Meaney.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Susan?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously four to zero.
The second one is a promotional full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works Water and Sewer Department for Max Meaney in Winchester to a W-14 Maintenance Foreman, also asking to waive the 15-day appointment period.
I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for the appointment of the promotional appointment of Max Meaney.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Susan?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously four to zero.
And then just to review the written report that I sent regarding general updates, I'll just go through them quickly. So the annual audit is underway. I want to just have a thanks to the Controls Office for managing that process. The Climate Action Advisory Committee is going to be having their first meeting next Tuesday starting at 7:00. That first meeting will include the appointment of officers and the creation of working groups. I've also been in communication with them about potentially needing to hire somebody to help with all the note-taking in the meeting notices, considering that they're going to have a lot of subcommittees or working committees. So we'll take a look at that need and also see if we can either absorb that cost or we'll have to make a reserve fund transfer. Also want to send out kudos to all the volunteers, the election poll workers, and the Town Clerk's Office staff for a great start to early voting. We had 267 people voting on the first day. There's 14 in total. Today is day three. Finances, I know we're going to talk about the budget. I'll look a little bit later, but there is a lot that's happening right now. We have unemployment insurance that we think is going to be $350,000 over budget. We have health insurance that's $20,000 under budget, so we'll show it the other way around. We're also trying to figure out what CARES Act is going to cover for this calendar year, but we're also trying to figure out what expenses it won't cover for the next six months after that. So we're working on a supplemental budget, and we're also thinking about proposing that the reserve fund, that's usually around $400,000, whether it makes sense to increase that amount to cover any potential unanticipated COVID-related expenses for next year. The state did receive state aid that was about $1 million higher than budgeted, but we've also made some internal adjustments. That number is more around $863,000. Again, things that we'll go into more detail about, but the staff is going to be making some recommendations. From an IT point of view, we submitted a community compact IT grant for an online permitting system for the building department. The MBTA, I know this has been asked for me by businesses, what's going on? We're still in discussion with them about the easement documents. We're waiting for a bunch of stuff from the MBTA, including their response to our easement documents, a side agreement that will address noise and other mitigation items, a maintenance agreement, and for us to review language in their bid documents. So quite a number of things that we're asking for. The microenterprise grant, we had, I think, at least eight or nine people apply for round one. Only four have qualified. The round two is going now that the income limits have changed. So people might, more people should qualify for that round, and that deadline is October 23rd. Now, we've also completed negotiations as well, six non-school unions. We're putting together a proposal for consideration at town meeting for non-union employees. So we're looking at the COLA that was set for 1.5% for this year and a couple other things. From a personnel standpoint, we did get some qualified applicants for the Assistant Treasure Position. So hopefully, we'll be able to do the interview shortly and get somebody on board. That office has some short staff, so that's been difficult during this time. And we also have an Assistant Town Engineer position that's open, and the deadline for applications will be October 23rd. So if you know anybody that would be interested and is a qualified engineer and wants to work for the town, please send them our way. I will give more construction updates at the next meeting on Monday. From a reopening standpoint, we have been currently operating under Phase Three, where offices can elect to be at 50% capacity. Town Hall right now is by appointment only. We have several options on the table to expand access and customer service as a winter month approach, and those we'll talk about as we get those underway. Town meeting, the warrant will be mailed to all residents on October 22nd, so this week. It's up on the town website already, so you can look at that. And then the motion book is going to be emailed to town meeting members only on October 27. And lastly, Winning Farm, we anticipate receiving approval from the Department of Housing and Community Development next week for two of the affordable housing, or sorry, the two affordable housing units. There's going to be a 60-day marketing period. It's units one and four. Unit one has a local preference. That means you either live or work in Winchester. And we'll put the application and the date for the two virtual information sessions on the Select Board webpage of our website after we receive approval from the state. Any questions?
Not seeing any. Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate the update. And again, to iterate your appreciation for the work that Town Clerk Mary Ellen Lannan and her staff are doing on the voting side of things. I think there's an excitement about people getting to the polls and feeling that it's a lot easier than they anticipated voting early and getting it done, dropping it off in the Dropbox. So we think it's a huge effort. It looks like it's easy on the outside, but behind the curtain, it's a lot of work. And we appreciate the diligence of the Town Clerk's Office. Moving on to item F on our agenda licenses, we do have a change of manager request from Left Eden Restaurant Corporation. They are the spot in Winchester, as we know, and it looks to me like they're changing their manager from Xavier Molina to Mr. Frank Richardson. So I'll take a motion to that effect unless there are other questions or concerns.
So I'll go ahead and move that we approve the amendment to the Retail Alcoholics Beverage License for Left Eden Restaurant Corp. doing business as the spot, changing the manager to Frank Lloyd Richardson.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. I do see Council for Left Eden is here. Attorney Mann, did you have anything that you wanted to add? We appreciate your attendance. It's fairly regular for our course of business, but happy to hear anything that you had to offer.
No, I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have had or have. We appreciate your vote this evening and look forward to reopening.
Great. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Let us know if there's anything that we can do to help the restaurant or you or the new manager.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Have a good evening.
Thank you too. And we have a hearing scheduled for 8:00 PM, and we're not quite there yet, but we'll move down to the business agenda. And the first item on the agenda is Woodside Road. And I do see that we have our Town Engineer, our key traffic engineer, Beth Rudolph is here. Hey, Beth, how are you?
Good evening. Thank you.
I should say reluctant traffic engineer.
Reluctant traffic engineer is a much better description. I did have a brief presentation that I don't know if Lisa or Patty or either one of you are able to pull it up. Thank you. So just briefly, by way of history, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. Thank you. So as some of the board members may recall, you might have been on the board when this was decided. Back in 2017, there was a memorandum of understanding signed between the town and Eversource as part of the 115 KV Transmission Project. And one of the items that the town was able to negotiate was mitigation for the area along Woodside Road, Wildwood Street, and for Winter Pond. I won't read the specific description here, but this is the language taken directly from the MOU. And basically, so we were able to get $175,000 towards various restoration activities that include landscaping improvements and other traffic calming infrastructure improvements in the area. Next slide, please. So just by way of background to that as well, as the town was negotiating that MOU with Eversource, the town hired both a traffic engineer, Tool Design Group, and also a landscape architect to look at that area to see, you know, what the improvements would make sense. So there was a corridor study completed by Tool that identified five potential projects along the Woodside Road, Wildwood Street corridor. And at the time in 2017, they estimated the construction costs of just over $150,000, not including the design or construction admin services. I would say that that number has not aged particularly well, given the bids that we've had come in recently are a lot higher than I would have expected. So I think that that number is fairly significantly higher than the $152,000 that was estimated back in 2017. The next part was, as I had mentioned before, we had a landscape architect put together a study to look at parking, pedestrian accommodations, trails, and landscaping along Little Winter Pond and Big Winter Pond. The estimated construction cost for that work was over $190,000, not including the design and construction admin services. This was, both of these studies were done with cooperation of the folks at the Friends of Winter Pond and also a core group of neighbors who are interested in the traffic calming improvements in that area. Although there's, in the past three years, there's, you know, several new residents have lived in the area as well. Next slide, please. So as we've tried to kind of figure out what to do with this $175,000, knowing that the cost for the design and construction of all the improvements far exceeds that $175,000 budget, we've gone back and forth, both staff and then also with T-TAC, who was not in existence in 2017 when this was created, but has certainly come into the discussion in the past few years. And so we've tried to figure out how best to prioritize that $175,000. There was some conversation about whether or not we should just use that money to fund like a master plan type design where we would, you know, take each project, you know, through or as far as we could through design and then try to go to capital to get all the projects completed. We had a call, I don't know, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, with representatives from the Friends of Winter Pond, from T-TAC, Select Board Member Biden Court was on as well. And the recommendation that we came to was really a compromise position, which was that we tried to get, we tried to get something done for each particular area. So something done for the traffic calming and something done for the Friends of Winter Pond. So T-TAC went back and reviewed the list of projects that was put together as part of the corridor study, and they came back with a memo that I believe has gone to the board that recommends prioritizing the speed tables on Woodside Road at Winter Pond and a raised crosswalk. So that's their recommendation as the first priority to be completed. Staff has had conversations with the Friends of Winter Pond, and Elaine Briland's also been involved in the Conservation Commission. We're not at a point where I can say specifically what the recommended action is out there, but I think that the specific scope of that can be further defined as we get into the design phase. And to be honest, it's kind of a function of backing the scope into the money that we have available as opposed to maybe just kind of getting the gold standard for what we want to see out there. So we went, staff went to Tool, and we asked them to put together a proposal to complete the design of the speed table work and then also to do a landscape element component, which, the scope of which is still a little bit undefined. And they came back with a proposal of about $70,000 to complete that work. I understand it seems rather high, but there's a lot of environmental permitting that has to go on because we are between the ponds there. We have to go to the Conservation Commission, so it's a little bit higher than your typical, maybe, traffic calming project. So the amount that we have remaining for construction would be approximately $100, just over $104,000. Next slide, please. So this is the plan that was in the original Tool study that shows, you can see at the kind of north and south end of Woodside Road, you can see the proposed speed tables there, and then a crosswalk that connects between Little Pond and Big Winter Pond. At the time, Tool had recommended putting in flashing beacons at that location. That was not something that T-TAC was in favor of. They were preferred a raised crosswalk on that location. So that's something that we'll look at in the design process in terms of what specifically makes sense there. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this is the landscape plan that was created back in 2007 with the assistance of Andrew Leonard. It's a little bit hard to see here. There were some It's a little bit hard to see here, there were some proposed trail improvements down to the water, some of which are no longer, I think, a priority for the Friends of Winter Pond. There's also potentially some improvements along the parking area, on the big Winter Pond side, some sidewalk improvements. And I know that the folks from the Conservation Commission and Friends of Winter Pond have also been considering some more, some other landscaping and environmental improvements out into the pond. So we'll work with with that group to figure out what makes sense with the scope that we have. But at this point, we're recommending to the board that we move forward with approving that $70,000 or approximately $70,000 towards Tool to design these two particular improvements. And then we would use the remaining money from that $175,000 to bid the project. And if you could go to the next slide please. The last piece I wanted to mention, because I know there's been a lot of conversation from folks in the neighborhood. This is the intersection of Woodside Road and Wildwood Street. This is the concept plan that was proposed as part of the corridor study that Tool did in 2017. And I know this is an area that is of a lot, is of concern for a lot of residents. This was T-TAC's second highest priority in their list. I did however, ask Tool to give us a design fee just to complete the design of this element, which is just under $40,000. And I was hopeful that that we would be able to cover it just within our, within, using my professional services budget, but it's a little bit more than I can cover myself. So staff is hoping that we will be able to pull together funding, you know, from professional services budget. We also have the potential to get $55,000 from town meeting, which I know is a request that the boards putting forward. So it's possible that we might be able to pull together some money to follow through with the design of this project and then hopefully on the back end, do the same thing, pulling together funding for the construction. But I don't want to commit to that right now, but that's certainly something that staff is working on. And I know it's something that folks in the neighborhood and T-TAC would all support, getting that that element done as well if we could as part of the project. That's all I had, I'm happy to take questions, I know that I ran through that pretty quickly. Thank you.
Thanks Beth, we appreciate it. Any questions or comments from members of the board?
Yeah, so the approximately 70,000, that includes the design only for the speed humps?
Right, so it includes the design and permitting for the speed tables and a raised crosswalk in that, in the Winter Pond area and also for a landscape architecture environmental component that will be scoped out with the Friends of Winter Pond and the Conservation Commission. So it's really kind of pulling a priority from each group who were involved in the original negotiation of that $175,000 when Richard Howard was town manager.
Yeah, so the raised crosswalk, that's not as high of a priority for T-TAC. Would it be possible to replace, to remove that and instead do the Wildwood at Woodside?
So I think if I'm reading their recommendation correctly, their recommendation was the speed tables plus the raised crosswalk. The original Tool design had the flashing beacons, T-TAC was not in favor of the flashing beacons, but wanted to replace it with a raised crosswalk in that area instead.
So Beth, this is Amy, um, thank you so much. This is, this is really helpful and this is an intersection that means a lot to me because I drive it often. Do you, what's the gap between what was done in 2017 and what we really need right now? In terms of information about this project?
Well, I mean, certainly a design is the key, right? We can't put together a process until we have that design. I'm not sure I maybe fully understand.
Yeah, sorry, maybe I'm misunderstanding. I thought that you had said that in 2017, there was a, there was some sort of Tool did something, did a design plan in this area, but maybe I'm misunderstanding that.
Yeah, it was, it was a corridor study. So it was just those very basic concept plans that I showed in the presentation, nothing more than that. Yep.
Sorry about that.
And now we need to go from, you know, concept level through full design and permitting. And I would imagine that the the design process would include a meeting, a public meeting with the select board to gather, you know, input from the public to make sure that everybody was comfortable with the design that was being proposed. And then also it would go to the Conservation Commission, which would also have a a public process to it as well.
So I mean, while I think that it's any time that we can install a raised crosswalk, I think I've said we should have a raised crosswalk at every crosswalk that we've ever looked at. And I would love to have the first one anywhere. But I think it's a much bigger safety concern for pedestrians at the intersection of Woodside and Wildwood than the crosswalk in between the two ponds. That gets a lot less usage. And the Wildwood at Woodside cars are just zooming by because the road is so wide open there. So I think I would much rather push the raised crosswalk, I think we should still have it, but push it down the priority list. If we can afford to do only two things out of those three, I would say this, the speed tables clearly are the number one. And Woodside and Wildwood intersection is number two. And the raised crosswalk.
So the way that the T-TAC proposal was written, it was the speed tables and the and the raised crosswalk all as one package. So I don't think that, I think we kind of have to pick either the speed tables and the raised crosswalk together or the Woodside at Wildwood intersection. I'm not sure we could, if we just took out like the crosswalk component, I don't think that would save us enough money to fit within that 175 budget unfortunately.
Can I ask you a question Beth? I just wanted to clarify, I think Mr. Goleboff was referencing this, but is there anywhere in town where we have speed tables?
No, no.
Okay, and is there anywhere in town where we have raised crosswalks?
No.
Okay, um, because I, I mean, obviously I'm very concerned about the safety of this area. It's been an issue for quite a long time, so it's great to be addressed, but I was just kind of curious about that. I do agree with what some of the other select board members have indicated that that crosswalk at the intersection seems to be the highest priority, not to suggest that any of the other components are not important. So I guess I'm kind of curious if it's possible to do, say, for example, raised crosswalks plus those crosswalks, like how much that would be?
Um, so I don't really have the numbers for, a raised crosswalk wasn't proposed as the, as part of the original Tool corridor study. I don't have a dollar value for that. You know, I would say that the, you know, I think we could design and construct the full intersection at Woodside and Wildwood plus the environmental, you know, Friends of Winter Pond piece with 175. But I don't think, I think like I said, I think we have to either pick and choose one location or the other. I don't think we can kind of take the the raised crosswalk plus the intersection. I don't, I just don't think we have enough money in that $175,000 to cover it.
Can I just interrupt you a second? So while you're talking, it'd be really helpful to see the share screen again as opposed to your phone, the green circle, if that's possible?
Yeah, I I think Patty was sharing the screen previously.
I don't know if Patty could bring that up, it might be helpful for us as as your, because your comments are so helpful and then we'll be able to kind of land them back in our, on the chart in our minds. Yeah, okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
So this is the, so this is the, the work that was proposed, the original Tool study, which is what T-TAC had had put as their number one priority with a little bit of a tweak. So they are proposing to to install the two speed tables that you can see at the northern and southern end of the the caught, kind of causeway area, the between big and little Winter Pond. And then at the middle of the two ponds, there's a proposed sidewalk there. The original study from 2017 had rapid flashing beacon proposed there, which in T-TAC, in their recent review of this, was not in favor of. They were instead in favor of a raised crosswalk at this location. So the proposal we got from Tool includes the design of this sort of package of, you know, components. So the the speed tables and the raised crosswalk, or excuse me, the crosswalk in that location. And then if you want to go to the next, maybe two slides forward, yeah, some more. This is a concept plan from 2017 that looked at the reconfiguration of the intersection of Woodside Road and Wildwood Street. Basically just kind of bumping out that corner where Wickford Road comes in to create more of a, of a bend here. So it's clear for vehicles coming on Wildwood Street that, you know, that there's a corner here and then really making more of a T intersection for the cars coming out of Woodside Road. So it will really have vehicles slow down when they're turning in and out of that intersection, which right now, you know, you can continue on from Wildwood Street to Woodside Road without tapping your brakes basically.
Yeah, can I just ask a couple quick questions and then?
Sure.
So I'm assuming there's, what is the speed limit around that curve? Is it 25 or is it 30?
So at Wildwood Street, I believe, and Jay can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's 20 miles per hour on Wood, Wildwood Street in that, that area.
Okay, that's good, because if somebody's making, if somebody's on Woodside going towards the flats, for example, and they're trying to make a left onto Wildwood, say, to go towards like the Packer Tennis Courts or something, I think there's a lot of positive in this. So I just would want to make sure that the speed's kind of low so that, you know, that there can be movement in this area. So that's good if that is the speed. And then just as another point of information, so near the big and winter, big and little Winter Ponds, is there a proposal related to sidewalks or what is the status with that?
So in the original plan that's up on the screen right now from Andrew Leonard and Jay, you can correct me, I think there was proposed reconstruction of sidewalks in this area. That is, I think, something Jay was hoping to do with maybe his Chapter 90 and roads and sidewalk money he gets from capital. But it's certainly within something that can be done in the future.
Yes, that's correct. I did promise the residents in that area that we would, uh, once the Eversource project was done, that we would go in and, uh, take care of the sidewalks that need repairs. That's correct.
And is the idea that where normally like cars can pull over, let's say near, near Big Winter, that even with the construction of sidewalks, then there'd be some sort of entry regarding cars or?
So I think, and this is something that would have to get worked out, but I think the intention is that, you know, that that area, you can kind of see in the crosshatching on this plan, that that area would remain parking and that the sidewalk would kind of terminate on either end of that. But that's certainly up for further discussion. This really hasn't been kind of fleshed out since the initial conversations in 2017.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like there's a lot of faith in it here. It seems like there's consensus of the board to make sure that we're making the primary intersection, I'll just say, safer than it is now. And I don't know to what extent that may absorb most of the budget. But then clearly this area in here needs some additional work as, in addition, you know, beyond just the potential speed tables, but maybe this can be phased because, um, so.
Right, so I I think there's a, you know, there's a long term commitment to make improvements in this area beyond the 175 that we have from Eversource. And there's certainly no shortage of things that we can do out here between, you know, potentially some work that EPW can do, potentially some work with Chapter 90 funds, potentially some requests from capital. So I think there's definitely a long term plan out here. It's just a matter of prioritizing how we want to spend that 175 that we have from Eversource. So that we can start that design process.
Okay, and just to recap, just my last question. So the attention to the primary intersection with the bump out, et cetera, how much would all of that cost? I'm assuming less than 175?
Yeah, so, so that was not T-TAC's top priority. So T-TAC's top priority was the speed tables and the crosswalk at Linder Pond. I did get the price from Tool to design this, which is just under $40,000. I would say construction is probably 60 to 80,000, I would guess, depending on what has to happen with drainage, can be higher out there. But don't hold me to any of those numbers, I'm just kind of guessing at this point.
Hey Beth, it's Susan. Yeah, it just, this is a lot of information and I wasn't involved in 2017, haven't been really following this. Could you just recap what you're proposing to spend at this intersection of Wildwood and Woodside? And what that will do, is it only the design fee?
Right, so right now, the proposal is based on the priorities that were given from T-TAC is to design the speed tables and the raised crosswalk at the Woodside Road corridor and then to do some currently undetermined landscaping, environmental improvements along Winter Pond, which will be scoped out with the Friends of Winter Pond. That's that $70,000 that we have, a proposal from Tool. I understand from, you know, the neighbors and from T-TAC and from staff that this intersection is a high priority as well. And this was T-TAC's second priority. So although we don't, we wouldn't have enough money with that 175 to fund the design of this and then also try to construct some of those other elements. I did get a proposal from Tool just to see what it would cost to do the design because frankly, I was hoping to pay for it with my professional services budget, but it's more than I can afford. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to, if the board moves forward with the speed tables as the top priority, that would be, we would be able to cobble together enough money through my professional services budget. And then also if we got that $55,000 from town meeting for traffic studies, that we'd be able to fund at least the design of this project now. And then hopefully in the future, we can find a way to put together a construction funding to do that in a timely manner as well. I understand this is super complicated and it's taken us as staff a while to work through how we even present this because there's so many projects and so many priorities out here, it's frankly hard to pick, right? So I fully understand that, you know, the kind of throwing this all out here in a five minute presentation is a lot to take in.
Thank, thank you for going through that again, that's helpful. It sounds like Mariano would like to get something accomplished at Wildwood and Woodside.
Yeah, I mean, I I think, you know, I I understand that this is a proposal, it's just, I I don't see the options that we have here. There's, it seems like there's only one option being presented.
And my, what I was wondering is it, is this a, I know this has been under discussion for a long, long time. Is there a rush to get this bid and done? Could we go back and look at how much it would cost to actually do the Woodside, Wildwood intersection and the speed tables, you know, sort of work, work through that costing?
Yeah, I'll just answer Mariano's question first.
Yep.
I think the, there's been a lot of conversation behind the scenes that not every, not all the board members have been part of that has gotten us to the point we're at today, which I think is maybe why you're not seeing a lot of different options. I certainly think if the board felt like the design of the Woodside and Wildwood intersection was a higher priority and didn't want to go with the priority ranking that T-TAC had provided, we could swap out probably pretty easily the design of Woodside and Wildwood for the design of the speed tables and the raised crosswalk in the Tool proposal and it'd probably be a pretty even match with that $70,000. I don't think there's necessarily like, the board doesn't have to vote this tonight, but to your question Susan, you know, we're coming up to the end of the Eversource work on Woodside Road in this area. They're starting to do kind of the the base pavement, they'll be back sometime next year to do final paving. So it makes sense for us to have this design process started and well underway so that we know if we need to coordinate with Eversource in terms of changing the timing of any of that final paving to make sure that we're not, you know, ripping up pavement that they've just put down in terms of doing some of this stuff. So I think the time is now for us to at least start this process, but certainly the board doesn't, if you're not comfortable, it's not like it has to be done tonight. There's certainly, you know, time. But in the near future, it would be really, it would be good to get this decided so that we can move forward with that design process.
I just ask a quick question, has T-TAC seen the proposal for the Wildwood, Woodside Road? Because I would, you know, just as far as protocol, definitely went there, I mean.
Yeah, so T-TAC reviewed, this was, this is, this was in the corridor study that was done in 2017. T-TAC reviewed that corridor study and came up with their ranking of priorities. And the speed tables were their first priority with. and the speed tables were their first priority with the raised crosswalk as kind of a package, and this intersection improvement was the second highest priority.
Okay, but. Jackie, can I jump in here just before we, we get too, too far afield? I see Ben Keeler is here from T-TAC, Ben is one of the chairs, and if we could elevate Ben to respond, and I will say, just as far as background, in, you know, 2017, we always get in this tricky situation with long-term projects where the costs just keep on moving away from us, and so the longer we take, the more expensive it is, but certainly, we discussed the Woodside and Wildwood from the very beginning as being a major issue when we first walked out there in the middle of the winter, and, but the high speed on Woodside Road is extremely dangerous. There are other options for us down the road, as we're looking at the Lynch School, the Select Board adopted a policy a few years ago, and we do school construction projects, we also trigger a traffic study to make that a component of the construction, like we did with the McCall Phase 2 project, we added on the Main Street projects and Mystic Valley Parkway projects to provide access, so there could be some funding down the road for doing some of those speed tables, but I, I think, T-TAC, and Ben can jump in here, really saw the high speeds coming through there as very necessary, so we've got basically three, you know, total projects and probably money for two at this point, so. Hey Ben, thanks for joining us tonight.
No problem, I appreciate it, Michael, thank you. I'll be, I'll be brief, obviously I appreciate everyone's engagement, the questions are sort of spot on. You know, the first thing I'll, I'll start with is specifically that, you know, we spent a half an hour, you know, just standing at Woodside and Wildwood and talking through the challenges there, we recognize that as a, is an extremely high priority. I think Michael, you know, said it well, though, that our job, you know, as an org, as a, as a committee, is to look at the corridor, so we always, we, we looked all the way up to Pond Street, right, and around Lynch, and thinking about, thinking about the school kids, so, you know, our, our job is to look at that entire corridor, and, and obviously help advise you and Lisa specifically on the components that make up a good corridor plan, recognizing that, you know, we don't have a blank check, and that this is a good opportunity to get some work done, you know, and, and so our job was to, to put forward a, you know, with that, and we're, we're supportive of Tool going forward and putting forward to that, that corridor study. Obviously budgets being what they are, our focus is just the, the best balance of multimodal use, and you've heard that from, from our committee before. It is balancing the needs of walkers, bikers, and residents, in, in some cases, over cars, and in this case, you know, specifically with this causeway, it's really becoming an area that is difficult for people to, to use for recreation, because of the speeds, because of the traffic during, you know, during, you know, normal times. And we have evidence and clear evidence of that. That obviously has been, you know, in the back of our mind, as, and, and looking at this, this, even this picture that you have from the original landscaping design, you know, those, those are the elements that we've sort of focused on because they were the original intent of the MOU and the negotiation, and, you know, we still think that those are a really important part of kind of returning this causeway back to, you know, a place where all residents can use it. Would we be opposed to, you know, shifting priorities and aligning with you on, on, you know, overemphasizing Wildwood and Woodside? No, we would not. But what I would ask you is that, you know, and I know that Beth and Jay have been, have talked about, you know, wanting to use other money, we, I mean, we want to finish the job, you know, we want your commitment to, you know, to help look at the corridor overall and continue to making improvements there. You know, I think ultimately, you know, right now, we'll, you know, obviously, it's, it's the board's decision with respect to priority, we're comfortable working, you know, in a, in kind of a gray space here and figuring out what we can get for the money, but ultimately, we needed to put forward a, a prioritize, prioritize plan, and then that's what we did. Happy to answer questions, you know, or, or fill in any gaps in terms of understanding.
Yeah. Can I, yeah, thanks, Ben. So my issue is, like Mike said, I think there's three different projects here. One is the speed tables, the other one is the raised crosswalk, and the other one is the curb bump out at Woodside and Wildwood. The problem is, the problem is that the raised crosswalk and the speed tables are being bundled as if that's, we have to take both at the same time. That's my issue with it. I think I, I'd like to take the speed tables and the curb bump out together, and then when we have additional funding, do the raised crosswalk in the middle here. There's, we have a, we have a crossing guard at Wildwood and Woodside for Lynch kids. That crossing guard and those kids are at risk every morning, because the speed limit might be 20, but because of the design of the road there, cars are going 40, and I wouldn't be surprised if every once in a while, there's a car going 50. And if we don't address that with a curb bump out, those cars are still going to go at that speed until they hit the speed table in the middle, and then a raised crosswalk, it makes a lot of sense to fin, as a finishing touch, but I think we need to address the speed going in and the raised tables, and so instead of bundling the tables with the crosswalk, let's bundle the tables with the curb bump out, and then let's put third the raised crosswalk. That's my proposal.
And just to clarify a bit, and I know that Mariano doesn't say no to raised crosswalks very easily, but you know, I, I think that the, the three priorities, you know, I was kind of considering those bundled as well, but you know, we, we did make a commitment to the Friends of Winter Pond, who have been engaged in the process as well, to do some work around not just the landscaping, but infrastructure work there, and I think that there's a proposal for a jetty there as well, so maybe what we need to do, now that we've kicked the tires a little bit, the good news and bad news is that we have another meeting a week from tonight, and maybe between now and then, we can see if there's another path towards more funding for us. We are asking, as Beth mentioned, for an additional 55K for traffic work from town meeting, but, you know, part of the confluence of events here is that FinCom did cut Beth's professional services budget by 15,000 going into the spring budget, you know, we were cutting everywhere and there was a hold on a lot of things when we weren't sure where the state was, so maybe additional funds can be added back in as part of a supplemental budget, I, I'm not sure, but we, we probably need to do a little bit more homework, even though we probably can't wait much longer than next week to move forward. I don't know, Beth, if that sounds okay, and then maybe we can, you know, regroup a little bit?
Yeah, I think that's fine, and I, and I can go back to Tool and get an idea of, you know, if we take the raised crosswalk out, I don't think it'll, it won't really reduce their, their design fee too much, I don't think. So we'll, we'll be above that $70,000 for a design fee if we do the speed tables and the Woodside at Wildwood intersection, but like you said, hopefully we can find some supplemental funding to try to make everything work.
Yeah, I mean, I think it should be in the neighborhood, when, when we asked for a raised crosswalk across from the post office, we were told that the study would be 30 to 40, or the sign would be 30 to $40,000 for that, so I think it should be, hopefully it's, it's within the same range.
I, I appreciate, you know, we're very happy to, to jump on it this week, obviously, I know that you guys are, are dealing with, again, multiple stakeholders and different challenges, it sounds like, you know, that there's commitment from the board to address the, the corridor over time, which is great, that's what we're looking for. Again, we'll be flexible in terms of, each of these pieces is great, I think, Mariano, to your point, you know, some of the, the speed table can be dangerous without other elements, and we want to respect that, and we understand that, I think what we're trying to do is make improvements to the corridor one step at a time, so we'll work with you on what, you know, step one and step two are.
Yeah, can I just also add that to your point, and thank you so much, we have so much respect for T-TAC and all the dedication that, that you provide to all these projects, and you really do improve the quality of life for Winchester citizens, so just wanted to throw that in, but I'm, theoretically, I'm certainly in favor of speed tables in the right location, I, to the extent that we don't have them elsewhere in town, and, you know, probably in theory, we could, you know, there might be needs in a lot of different locations, but I do know aesthetic is very important here, this is obviously very important natural area, and you know, like with the tennis courts, for example, they've, you know, that situation is not perfect, the Palmer Dixon Courts, but there is some kind of other elements that are in use, including like, you know, signage and extra paint on the, the roadways, and so I just wanted to, at some point, just know that, just find out whether or not T-TAC has considered all kinds of options, I think there is some elevation here as well, it decreases, I mean, this, you know, it goes down elevation, I think to some extent, it's almost like a bowl effect, and whether or not in that instance, a, a speed table is appropriate, you know, whether or not it really is the, the best method, so in any event, that's for another future meeting, but I guess I'm sort of more aligned with what Chairman Bettencourt is, is proposing, thank you.
Thanks, Jackie, thanks, Ben, and Beth will table this for next week, and we'll see if we can reach into the couch cushions and see if there's anything to make, you know, these projects work, or at least have a path forward, I mean, I, I think that there's always an interest for us, once we have, we study something, a corridor like this, to make sure that, that we follow through on the projects that have been identified through that corridor study, so, and it is, I mean, it's, I, I don't think that there's anyone that drives 20 miles per hour through Wildwood, I mean, it's, it's just, it's, it's very unsafe, so we appreciate T-TAC's attention to the matter, and we appreciate your recommendations too, Beth, we'll, we'll, we'll work on it over a period of a, we can see what we get, so thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
And, Beth, are you here on Vail as well?
I'm, I'm here for the hearing, and then I was gonna stay for the town meeting or articles, I think you're gonna talk about the MBTA potentially, and I can certainly stay for the Vail if you need me to.
No, that's fine, I, I was just, just trying to, trying to get you out of here, so we'll, we'll, we'll jump back to the hearing now that we've under item G, and we'll open the public hearing on EverSource and Verizon grant of location. If, Beth, if this is, if you want to jump in and give us an idea.
Sure, so the board actually approved a grant of location for this back in February. There's two utility poles that are jointly owned by EverSource and Verizon that were required to be installed to provide service to Abbey Road, which is a new subdivision, that is, the roadways completed, houses are gonna be, start to be constructed there shortly, I would imagine. And when they went out to install the poles, one of the locations couldn't be installed because of utility conflict, so this is just slightly relocating one of those poles, but it does require a new grant of location or change to the existing one. In hearing, EPW have reviewed it and have no concerns.
No concerns, okay, and I see Jacqueline Duffy is here as well. Hi Jacqueline, how are you?
Can you hear me?
Hi.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Um, yes, what happened was we ran into a ledge, so we could not put the pole where we had originally sent in February.
Okay. Any comments or questions from members of the board this time, or members from the community? I don't see any other hands raised right now, but please raise your hand and we'll call on you. Okay, so seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any other comments or questions from members of the board? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the change of the grant of locations.
Well, I, I do have a question, mostly about the motion, am I, is this a new, just a grant of location, or should I make reference to the existing grant and say that this is modifying it? Which way should I go?
I, I think identifying the revision, yeah.
All right.
But, you know, you, you can, you can reference the, the underlying grant of location.
So I'll go ahead and say that I moved that we approved the, a grant of location for EverSource and Verizon to install a a pole on the eastly side of Highland Avenue, about 18 feet north of Abbey Road, which would modify the existing grant of location to relocate this one pole, this one pole that they couldn't build as originally approved, and that this is necessary to provide underground electrical service to the Abbey Road subdivision.
Second?
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously, five to zero. And move on, I, I'm gonna jump around a little bit.
Thank you.
If we can, thank you, Jacqueline, we have the Vail development update and recommendation.
Well, this is just an update, there's, there's no vote necessary, we, we don't have to do it right now, if you want to let other people go ahead, but I'm happy to do it now, if you want.
Let, just do it quickly, I don't know if Brian is here for that, or town meeting articles.
Okay, well, just because a lot of time has gone by since we first talked about this, I guess in the summer, I, I think Patty has a visual, if she's able to share that, that would be helpful, because this is kind of complicated. But just to review, it's a very large parcel of land in Woburn, sort of bounded to the north by Montvale Avenue and Route 93, Interstate 93, and then extending, you know, southwards, and the southerly part of it is right near Sunset Road in Winchester. And what's going on now is that the Woburn City Council is considering zoning special permits to two projects that are close to Sunset Road. On the right of the screen is a senior living project, which would have about 223 units of senior housing. And then moving to the west and leftwards, there's a residential development of about 197 condominium units. 75 of those are townhomes, those are on the westerly side there, where the cursor is, and that's closer to the river, closer to the Abidona. And then going uphill and then back towards the senior living facility, there are three multi-story buildings with condominium units as well. And both Woburn and we asked for peer review of the stormwater arrangements, and ours has come in and basically found that what they are proposing does comply with the Woburn stormwater ordinance and the overall stormwater management plan for the whole site, but just, you know, it's, it's adequate, and they have, and our peer reviewer, Weston and Sampson, has some suggestions for improving it, that would make it a little more add capacity and make it, not, not future-proof it, but make it better able to be ready for, you know, changed conditions with climate change. I think we're still waiting for Woburn's peer review to come in, and Beth is, is very patiently and graciously meeting, having small meetings, and with Leggett McCall and with their engineers, and we're trying to just sort of have everybody negotiate maybe some improvements to the stormwater plans. The other thing is that the the developer of the residential project is Polty Homes of New England, Polty has a lot of projects, they're a national company, and they have been listening to the Sunset Road neighbors and, and me, and they are doing some improvements to their landscaping to really mitigate the visual impact of that project to that neighborhood. So there's some projects- So there's some progress being made. And then the only, and then the, you know, the, the hearing has been continued and will, they'll, they'll be discussing it again on November 10th. So basically stay tuned. And we're still working to, you know, mitigate the impact of this very large project on that Sunset Road neighborhood. And, and also on the Abidona and Winchester's, you know, flooding situation downstream of Woburn. So that's just kind of the update and I'm sure Beth could, could add more detail if you want.
Can I just ask you a quick question directed to you or to Beth? And first of all, thank you so much, Ms. Verdicchio, because it's such an important project and a lot of concern, as you well know better than I, I'm sure, in that area of town. So particularly given the size of the project, so all of what you've detailed is, is so important with respect to the stormwater. I just wanted to follow up and maybe this issue has already been resolved and, but was there also a question about emergency access? And whether or not it would potentially be on Sunset Road or something? And if that's resolved, fine. Or maybe if there's an update on that, if there isn't an update, that's fine too. I just wanted to ask about that too. Thank you.
Yeah, it hasn't been fully resolved. No, the, the subdivision plan shows a strip of land coming from the senior living facility all the way down to Sunset Road. And they also have a little stub of a road that would connect up with a potential road down to the right or to the east on to Forest Street. So the problem with both of those is that the, you know, this is a very large commercial mixed-use zoning area. It's a, it's a, I forget what you call it. It's an overlay district. And the, the land in Winchester where that, you know, that Sun, you know, Sunset Road is in Winchester. And the land off of, and the road that would go connect up with Forest Street in Winchester, those are zoned for residential use only. So there's, there's, there's a zoning issue in Winchester about access of both. The neighborhood and from the beginning, even in the, when this whole project was going through NEPA review, which is a while ago, it was discussed that if you really do need this access would be emergency access, if that, that really is needed by this project. It would be better to have it off of Forest Street because it's just a bigger street and not a cul-de-sac like Sunset Road. But there would be some legal hurdles. We really haven't resolved that issue.
So obviously the concern is that it ends up not being for emergency access and that there will be just constant use of that access point into the, the new campus essentially. So yeah, it's a huge issue. So anyway, I was just kind of curious. So there, or even what might be suggested, you know, if it's sort of like arms with, you know, gates or something like that. I'm just kind of curious. Thank you.
Yep. No, so it's always been discussed as being the one, at least off of, off of Forest would be gated, emergency access only. And that's, you know, there is a gate already shown in the, in the site plan, the last site plan that they showed. So that wouldn't be in Winchester land, in Winchester would be on, on that little stub of the road that is within Woburn. And, you know, I think, you know, there, there's a discussion to be had. They're, they're willing to discuss it and we are going to pursue that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Appreciate it and all the effort that's gone into this. I know it's been a lot. I think you're an honorary member of the Woburn City Council at this point. So.
Yeah, I'm very excited about that.
Thank you. Appreciate the updates. So we'll keep moving and move on to the next agenda item. 654 Main Street is presenting on a project that is right now, I think before the planning board with a special permit application. And so we'll hear about that. And then we'll get to the town meeting warrant articles immediately following. And I think that I saw Ian Gillespie was here and some, some others. Hi Ian, how are you?
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And are there other members from your crew that need to be let in?
I believe Ted Tolukey and the architect would welcome it, perhaps my partners, Jan Steenberga and Paul Sutley. And your own Larry Beals might be with us.
Oh, okay. Great.
Ian, this is Ted Tolukey. And I would just ask the select board if you can hear me.
Yes.
All right. And then I have a presentation, if I'm able to share it.
Sure.
And you see it at the bottom of your screen to share?
This is not allowing me to share. I normally see that and I apologize, but it's not showing up here.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, let me just see.
The format and format is not showing that. I'm aware of how you can see that normally, but.
Right. Well, and it's not actually allowing me to let you share it. Um, I could, oh, wait a minute. Let me just find you again.
And yes.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you, oh, wait a minute. Let me see. All right, I'm going to, um, I moved you to panelist. Now can you see it?
Need to unmute yourself again.
All right.
I just made you a panelist. Can you see it now?
Yes.
All right.
All right. So I have now a screen that says Town of Winchester Select Board dated 19 October. Can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Please see it. Thank you. Thanks, Patty. Thanks, Ted.
All right. That's great. Thank you. Let me see. So Ian, I think we're ready to go if you'd like.
Terrific. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for inviting us to join you on the agenda this evening. When we saw you last, we reviewed the proposed plans for 10 Converse Place. And at the moment, that project is on hold as we seek further clarity from the planning board. This evening, we have been asked to review with you our 320-page application for a CBD permit for 654 Main or Fells Hardware. We won't take you through 320 pages. We'll take you through the summary. We've had four meetings on the project with the planning board and five meetings with their consultant, Dennis Carlon. We've also recently met with the Winchester Historical Commission. And they found unanimously that the project had no adverse impact on an historical resource and recommended favorable action. We also met with the Design Review Committee. It was our, actually our second meeting within three months with them. They were very gracious. They had seen the project in great detail over that three-month period. And they too agreed unanimously to recommend favorable action. They actually had some quite nice comments. I'm Ian Gillespie of Gillespie and Company and I am a commercial real estate developer. And I'm joined this evening by my good friends and colleagues, Jan Steenberga and Paul Sutley from their firm, Ad Meliora. The very talented architect running the machine is Ted Tolukey, who will take us through the presentation of the building in a minute. Our planner and civil engineer is Larry Beals and John Copley of Copley Wolf is the landscape architect. I just want to mention in passing that John Copley is the dean of landscape architects in Boston. I'd like to remind folks of the regulatory context in which we have planned this building. Some of our audience will remember the 10 years of master planning for the Central Business District from 2002, 2005 to 2015. At the 2015 town meeting, the planning board proposed a rezoning. The idea was to re-energize the downtown. And I know some of you have seen this before, but we feel so it's very important to the context of what we're doing. So to put our presentation in context, we'd like to briefly review what was the planning board's presentation to town meeting at the time. And that's what we have. This slide is the planning board's slide to the town meeting. The planning board reminded town meeting that the process had started in 2002 and continued. They concluded that the zoning was out of date, badly out of date, was, were their words. The goal of the new zoning was to add residential housing and to extend the retail district at both Main Street and Mount Vernon. The goal for housing was 200 new units over a period of 10 to 15 years. The idea was to encourage mixed use. This building is actually right next to us. And you'll see in Ted's presentation, a lot of reference to what we refer to as Joe's Pizza. And the idea was to encourage mixed use with retail and restaurant space at the streetscape with residential above, which is exactly what we've done. We have heard and taken to heart also the need to maintain the aesthetic. The board felt comfortable, oh, sorry, these are, by the way, the areas of development that the planning board had identified at the time. I'm sure many of you remember these very clearly. We actually have projects, you'll see that 10 Converse is in one of these two areas. And that the hardware store is in a second. So we are in two of your areas of proposed development. And finally, the, the board was very comfortable. These were images that the board proposed to town meeting to, in effect, say, we can accommodate a more urban, a taller building, in this case, 55 feet. I, I think our buildings look a little bit better than a couple of these, but town meeting approved the planning board's proposal with a 92% affirmative vote. And one of the things the planning board also wanted was to include affordable housing. And we have done that in both our projects. Our presentation this evening is for the Fells Hardware Store site. And I'm sure you all know Kevin Ryan and his son Andrew. I'm pleased to report that the beloved hardware, hardware store, excuse me, will come back into new quarters in the finished building. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ted Tolukey. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Ian, and thank you to the members of the select board. Ian gave a brief introduction and what I'd like to do is run through our presentation rather briefly and give you a brief overview of the permitting process. As Ian noted, we've already had our pre-application meeting with the town planner and we've submitted our special permit application and have received Historical Commisiable Favorable Action and Design Review Committee Favorable Action. I'm going to provide a brief overview of the existing conditions, a recap of the Central Business District, Section 7.3 of the zoning bylaw, which is really the requirements as a part of this special permit application and an overview of the proposed design. We know the location, 654 Main Street. A couple of the primary aspects of the design proposal is that 63 Vine Street will be rebuilt and renovated as a residential unit. There'll be two commercial spaces, including bringing back Fells Hardware, 36 dwelling units, of which 15% will be affordable. There'll be 19 one-bedroom, 15 two-bedroom and two three-bedroom units with an increased annual tax revenue of approximately 346,000. There'll be 36 to 41 off-street parking spaces, 32 bicycle spaces and a 2.49 FAR with 25% open space to the sky and a building height of approximately 52.83 square feet above mean grade. As I mentioned, a big part of the project is the restoration of 63 Vine Street. As you can see, the exterior is in pretty need of some repairs. And as a big part of our presentation and application is the 63 Vine Street renovation, which fulfills Section 5 of the Guidelines for Existing Historically Significant Buildings, which really promotes and protects Winchester's center's historic resources. Also notable is to recognize the importance of this site and what it means to Winchester as a gateway site, reinforcing its edge, the historic district, the cultural district and the central business district, as noted in the perimeter locations here and as shown it. So we feel it's a pretty important location to help be a catalyst for the projects and those very meaningful districts has been noted. Part of our application, and I won't go through all these pieces, is fulfilling the zoning bylaws and the standards for the site plan review, as well as design review guidelines, which we outlined in our application and will feel that we fulfilled. And additionally, throughout the process, we looked at the town's elements of forms, which is really a great descriptive document that points to the qualities of part of the town's past, present and future architecture, which we also feel we've met throughout the application in our design. These are diagrams of our design process, which I think helps explain how we got to our proposal. The site, there are a few miscellaneous buildings. We start with a zoning dimensional volume to help us understand the capacity which allowed under the special permit. Through our series of meetings with the planning board in the pre-application process, we felt that four-story volume was the appropriate scale. And it was important to restore 63 Vine Street and improve streetscapes along Main Street and setting back the primary building volume. As we further developed the architectural language, we broke the building into two separate volumes. One, which is the mercantile building that maintains some of the language and articulation of masonry as seen at 612 Main Street, or favorably known as Joe's Pizza, as well as creating a residential building along Elmwood Avenue that connects to the historic fabric through vernacular design language with roof gables and dormers, as well as connecting the mercantile building with cornices throughout Main Street to ultimately get us to our design presentation. There are basically five aspects of the design. One, as noted in orange here, is the Main Street building or the mercantile building, where there'd be two retail spaces. The residential building along Elmwood will include a residential entry, as well as a garage parking entry, as well as the restoration of 63 Vine Street, along Vine Street and a shared courtyard that will be shared between all elements around the property. We work with Copley Wolf, who's a terrific landscape architect, to green its edges, provide plantings, street trees, cafe seating, ornamental streets on the trees at the corner of Elmwood, as well as private patios around the perimeter and a raised trees in a central courtyard. And so really the all sides of this building, we really look to provide additional greenery to really help make the site more sustainable and ease its edges with proper screening and buffering. Couple of shots that I like to show you is a brief overview of 654 Main Street, which is mostly a parking lot area with one-story building. And this is really the before and after, where we show connections with the mercantile building and the masonry along Main Street, as well as the residential building and its connections to Elmwood and the Vine Street fabric. So we work really hard to create contextual connections of the architectural language, not only along Main Street, but also along Vine Street by creating softer, more architectural details that bring back and evoke some of the vernacular language that looks around the edges here. And you see 63 Vine Street. So the building is very much 360 degrees. There's no front, there's no back. And we worked hard to reinforce its edges and really make great connections to our different neighbors. This is the first floor plan. And as you see, the two retail spaces, this is where Fells is going to be, as well as an other retail space. It could be a future cafe or small storefront, the parking entrance, some residential units with the private courtyards along the rear, as well as the residential courtyard and 63 Vine Street, which will be turned into a two-bedroom unit. This blue line that runs through the site is actually the location of 100-year FEMA flood plan, plane. And this is quite an interesting diagram, which is an event that may or may not ever occur. And this is quite an interesting diagram, which is an event that may or may not ever occur in the future. But you see the flooding along these streets and part of our team, Larry Beals, a civil engineer, has done a really terrific job working on compensatory storage requirements. Through the Conservation Commission and DEP. Because the site is rather unique, it's got eight sides. We were able to work on an automated parking design that allows for a total of thirty-six to forty-one parking spots below grade. With the entrance to the parking outside of the floodplain. And we also provided a traffic impact study. Where was determined that there is really no perceivable impact on traffic at the nearby intersections and roadways. And this is a diagram just showing some of the proximity to the train and some of the MBTA bus stops. Typical floor plan, basically is a mix, as I noted early in the presentation, for one-bedroom and two-bedroom units with a central corridor. So that allows us to have natural light on all edges of the units and really help make a really comfortable place for people to live and engage at the edges. So what I'm going to do now is give you a basic, I like to call it a virtual walk around the block. As seen one from one's eye level, where we begin on Elmwood, walk down Main Street, and then end on Vine Street. So this is the first of a series of perspectives that really show the residential and mercantile building in its context, which is approximately a three and a half to four-story building. We have copper sheet metal roofs that reinforce street patterns, as well as gables and dormers and textured masonry and cornice lines. So we really worked hard to develop the architecture to be consistent with the fabric. And what we really worked to do is create details that relate to the human dimensions. We worked with the guidelines in the zoning bylaws and the elements of form. Such that the building increases in height and is shaped to be more slender at the top with these sloped gables and and dormers and the differing materials. That create animated roof lines and silhouettes. We've got details that include New England Authentic Red Brick, which is really sympathetic to the general downtown palette. As well as details with a mix of depth and texture. Operable windows with a balance of flush and recessed balconies. That are scaled directly to the character of the joining open spaces, as well as chimney elements that relate to the living spaces within. One of the other parts of the project was worked on depressing the area in the center of the building where we would locate mechanical systems. So that we worked on sightlines, not only from Vine Street, but also Main Street, that really cut down the visibility to such equipment that is often seen from the public way. Walking down Elmwood, you begin to see the gentle slope of the street and the ornamental tree that lead you to the residential entry. The dormers and the way they change in scale and pattern. And as you move back farther towards Main Street, you begin to see some of the larger windows in the storefront that maximize visibility and transparency. Through the ground floor retail, we've included some lateral arm awnings that really hope help activate the vital marketplace, which is supported by the CBD and the Winchester Cultural District. As well as sign panels, and as you see the brick ballot and the balconies as you project. As you move back, one of the other pieces, parts of the project by setting the Main Street building back somewhat. Was to reinforce the green edges of the street trees that lead you down Main Street. And as you move around the corner, you begin to see the public entry and the accessible entry that is necessary to get the first floor above the FEMA floodplain. And you see some of the balconies, slight projections, the sign panels, as well as the lateral arm canopies, the street trees, and the experience of walking with some of the planters. I really think this could be a great social space where people are sitting outside, sitting on the stairs, really engaging activity as you walk around the corner and move into the storefronts. And part of it is really to make sure that the architecture at the pedestrian scale was animated, transparent to the uses beyond. With the planters and the visibility of the storefront, you begin to see the lateral arm canopies that create places where people can put goods out on the street. As well as a sign panel for Fells Hardware Store that will be lit appropriately. Is a different view looking up the street with the street trees and the canopies and the entrances, which I think will really be terrific as you move around the corner. Back up Main Street. As you begin to move towards Vine Street. And to the point where we get to celebrate the restoration of sixty-three Vine Street. So we've worked with the Historic Commission to anticipate some of the building materials that could be behind some of the aluminum siding. Such as wood siding, the potential for six over six window sashes that are double-hung, operable shutters. And I think the fun part of a restoration project will be the forensics of when we get to see behind, particularly the entry. Where we could recreate the surrounds and front piece and casings with the heavy entablature and entablature. And enclosed pediment on each side of the side elevation, as you see with the eve returns around the edges. So as you move up Vine Street, I think this really is where we begin to conclude. Is you begin to see how the topography of Vine Street and Main Street really start to interplay together. And the different forms as they speak to the neighborhood, the gable roofs that sort of create peek-a-boo, peek-a-boo sightlines through the street. That connect to some of the other historic architecture, as well as create an edge condition that pulls you back into Main Street. So in general, this is just to kind of give you an overview of the project. Like I mentioned, it's a two-point four-nine FAR within the special permit guidelines. We meet the fifteen-foot rear yard setback as a part of the special permit. And we've fulfilled parking, which is within the guidelines, as well as bike racks for the residences. And in general, before we conclude, I think another part of the zoning bylaws really essential is is the way it meets the purpose. And this is where I'm going to pass it to Ian to wrap it up. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ted. You can't imagine what a difficult job Ted had dealing with a site that has eight sides to it. It was kind of interesting. We have tried to be brief in covering three hundred and twenty pages of planning board submission, which is available to all interested parties. We're adding to the economic vitality of the CBD, not only with hopefully, you know, some three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of tax revenue. But more importantly, by bringing people and activity to the center. We provide a diversity of housing by bringing both smaller units and affordable units to the center. And hopefully, we have done it in a way that is respectful to both the mercantile center and our residential neighbors. And I think it's a tribute to Ted's talent that he has done that. We are next before the planning board on November sixteenth. The board board is very responsive to public comment. And we would be very grateful if the select board and your audience would express your opinions to the planning board. So thank you very much, and we welcome your questions.
Thank you, Ian and Ted and everyone in your team. We appreciate making the effort to come and walk us through this. Was very well conceived and really very respectful of what the town has been working towards for really the past twenty years. So we certainly appreciate that and the heavy lifting involved in the the site work and the preservation of the house. And we certainly, you know, appreciate that the. The town boards and commissions have responded so positively to it. And while I don't want to get in the way of that and rain on anyone's parade with the special permit. We do have a housing production plan. As you may know, I think I had mentioned it when you came in for Converse Place. So if there is any interest, affordable housing is our, one of our main policy objectives. So I do see five units as part of this that's connected to the Center Business District zoning. But we would always welcome any sort of proposal for a lip. I actually put it on the agenda kind of accidentally, just because that's how I was thinking of it. But so we're we're always welcome to entertain that and I'll certainly take any comments or questions from members of the board.
I have, I have a few. If that's okay. Okay, if I go, Chairman?
Oh, please.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank you so much for your investment in Winchester to Mr. Gillespie and his entire team. It should go without saying, the town is extremely grateful for any developer who has spent so much time and effort. And would devote so much, you know, capital resource to our town. And I just wanted to really emphasize that to you, and you should already know that we're very grateful for your interest in investing in Winchester. And I just wanted to reiterate that. I also wanted to thank you so much for working collaboratively with our boards to, you know, sort of see the the goals that are in mind with those, you know, guidelines and the elements of form. Thank you so much for pointing those out in the presentation, because they certainly took a long time and effort to to draft those. So I'm glad that they seem to be somewhat helpful. And and I think in the end, you know, this project is, it has so many beautiful aspects. And, you know, we always look forward and but I do think, you know, it seems like I, you know, don't know a lot about the collaborative process in the past on this project. But to the extent that it got us to where it is now, it seems like there was a lot of positives, even if there was, you know, some, you know, extra time and effort involved. So I wanted to thank you for sticking with our town and, you know, sort of kind of seeing through so many of these features in the project. I just had a couple of quick questions for you. I don't want to be sort of nitpicky, because I, there's so many, you know, beautiful aspects to the design. They're really more informational questions. I guess one goes to the parking and one is just the roof plan. So as far, but again, I'm not, you know, suggesting that these things are more important than what you've already, you know, presented. So it's just kind of a couple of questions that I had. But I but I don't want to get that out of proportion with my earlier comments. To praise your team for working with our town and with our town boards to get the project where it is here. But as far as the parking goes, I I guess this is also, you know, just kind of a point of information. I'm not sure whether or not we have lift parking in town. I'm not sure whether or not we have any kind of a guideline or a bylaw on lift parking. I would have known that a couple of years ago when I chaired the planning board, but I I I don't know that we do, although maybe something that we have, you know, would be interpreted along those lines. I'm kind of curious whether or not you guys envision some sort of valet, sort of assist. I'm sure that everyone who's a owner would be trained in the operation. That's a, you know, it's a huge step to have. Those can be very successful in urban settings. And not to say that they can't be in suburban settings, but obviously, you know, I'm sure you guys don't want to have a lot of backup on Vine Street. So it seems like, you know, much, much of the parking, while the numbers are high, which is great for onsite parking. They're completely dependent on the lift operation. So kind of a little curious about, you know, how you guys see that operating. And then my last question, and because I I I get mad at myself when I don't ask this question, so I'll just mention it. I'm sure at some point you'll be, your elevations include a roof plan. But I'm just kind of curious whether or not it will be sort of multiple AC units or, you know, all along the the roof line. Or whether or not that's a dumb question and that a more centralized system is envisioned and planned. So that there won't be that effect on the roof line. Thank you so much if you might be able to touch on those two. Thank you again for your time and your investment in our town.
Ian, would you like, I can answer a couple of those questions and maybe you can follow up with that. So in in general, just the first question, I should say the second question around mechanical, and then I'll go to parking. So we're still in schematic design. The building is recessed all around three sides in the center of the building by three plus feet. And currently, we are looking at individual units so that they would be. Excuse me for the siren. One of the benefits of being next to the fire station. So these have, they will be out of the sightline as individual units to answer that question.
Due to the, due to the three-foot perimeter?
Yeah, so if I, we didn't include this recessed plan. But basically, if you can imagine in the center of the building, there's an L, which will be access from the roof. Where there will be a walkway where one will be screened, where one will have screening for the mechanical units.
Okay, just, you know, needless to say, we're just interested in screening if the, I think you call that a parapet, I think.
Yeah.
What is going to, you know, effectuate that, that's good to know. Otherwise, I'm sure it would be something of interest to you as well. Thank you.
I, and I think we can also look at, as we develop this in the deep recess here, some slight parapet screening to help minimize any visibility. Okay, so on a parking point of view, this is the Elmwood drive aisle. There's, and I'll show you the parking plan. Which will be the first floor. So there are two garage doors. There's a staging area inside where there's a touchpad, which the lifts open. One drives in the car and they're self-park. So there is not a requirement for valet with this system. But it's something that could be evaluated.
And then, and then this is like, is it two-story lift?
No, it's a one-story lift. So there is a single basement space below, which you're looking at here. So as the, as the cars go into lifts, this is not for public access. And what happens is the lift goes down. This is the person that drives in. They do the touchpad. It's regulated through the state. Then the motorized vehicle is then brought into the different spots and then brought and recalled. And brought through the vehicle lift before it's brought back up to the first floor, and there'd be a small waiting area for people where the lobby is located.
And that, all that is is mechanical, like where it's taken to the spot, each respective spot? Or is that something where the driver drives into that spot?
No, no, yeah, it's all mechanical. So the driver does not leave the parking loading zone in the vehicle lift level. And then that, the elevator is then called to the basement where motorized automated parking lifts pull the car into the different locations.
And then if somebody's coming into the garage, so are there two of them? So someone's coming into the garage while someone is going out. There's two garages in and out, but.
Exactly.
And then would there be two respective lifts?
There's two respective lifts. There's an, there's an accessible lift and another lift. And and essentially, the car would be pointed in the opposite direction and there'd be a lift in and a lift out.
Okay, and then as far as, so would it be in the condo docks, things like, you know, regular maintenance of it? And because obviously, I'm assuming, you know, people would want that to continue to work, since so much parking is reliant on those mechanicals. So do you have, does your team, I'm assuming, have some sort of level of experience with those? And so you're able to kind of integrate into the residential documents, not only training for the residents. But also to make sure that there's regular maintenance so that.
Absolutely.
We, yeah, we just want to make sure that it's as successful as you guys want to make sure it is, so that we don't end up having all the parking on the street.
Absolutely. I think the maintenance and a plan, the vendor's best interests are to provide a maintenance plan and to also make sure that their service, because it's their business. And so there'd be training, there'd be also a maintenance plan for the lifts. And their companies have on-call service if anything was to happen, and that's one of the reasons why there's two lifts. If anything did happen, the turnaround for any repairs would be very quick.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you so much, Ian and Ted for presenting this. I mean, I think this, it looks like a great development in, in an area where we've heard from so many residents. Especially as they, empty nesters who want to downsize and stay in Winchester. And there's not that many opportunities, especially opportunities where they can be less reliant on cars and walk to places. So I I think this is a fantastic development for that, as well as providing some affordable housing as well. And the businesses in that area must be overjoyed at the prospects of having so many customers living within walking distance. And I know that a lot of the businesses are struggling right now. So I think that's great. I did see it on the agenda as a lip. I did see it on the agenda as a lip. And I know that this presentation is for the special permit. But yes, I would appreciate if you had a proposal for a lip. And, you know, the the board here would, I think we would consider it, especially because it would, it would bring additional affordable housing to the CBD.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if I should respond or wait for other members of the board to comment, but yes. Clearly, unfortunately, in today's zoning process in Massachusetts, the 40B is always in the back of the mind. We have said, and I think we've said it to you, to the to the board that, you know, these two sites, we we would hope not to do 40Bs because we think they are so central to the fabric of Winchester. But we also understand your desires to fulfill the 2015 Town Meeting zoning. And if it requires another 10% affordable component to do that, of course, we would look to do that as respectfully as possible. We have candidly, as we talked about with Ten Converse, been very confused by the planning board's direction to us. Now, we presented this after tens of thousands of dollars of work through the summer. We presented this plan and frankly, the board's response was primarily to criticize the Design Review Committee for having favorably discharged us after having reviewed the project twice. So we are confused. And we welcome your help in finding alternatives. And we we have all done affordable housing. Everybody loves affordable. And I've done friendly 40Bs in the past, so we're very open to that. I'd rather not, but we're open to it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I I think the building is exactly what Town Meeting had in mind when they approved the rezoning of the CBD. If anything, it's actually a little bit shorter than what was presented in 2015 at Town Meeting. So I appreciate that you're presenting a building that is exactly what Winchester asked for.
Yeah, thank you, Ian. I I think also, you know, when we consider doing a friendly 40B at that location, it it seems like we could get a little bit more height out of the building without too much detriment to the neighborhood, maybe even an additional floor there. I don't know if that's been considered. I I think I'm, I was surprised looking at the the sightlines from the top of Vine Street that it was quite low. So I didn't know if there was capacity, you know, sometimes that's how we make a 40B economically feasible for a developer of this, with a project of this quality.
Well, actually, Dennis Carlon, simply from an urban design point of view, wanted the mercantile building to be five stories. That was simply from an urban design point of view. He thought it should be there. And Dennis has a very good eye. We felt as though the board would not approve that. The board had complained about the height when we were at five stories. And so we said fine and went to four stories. And Ted had a real challenge to do that while also incorporating the dark 63 Vine. And I think it's fair to say that a 40B probably could not, we we can't afford to do 63 Vine in that context.
I I do notice that the building at the intersection of Elmwood and Park, which would be essentially the bookcase to this building on Elmwood, this is five stories. And the buildings on Vine are taller. So I mean, if that's what's necessary to make economically feasible, to make a friendly 40B, I I would echo Mike's comment and and I think we should consider that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I know, looking at that view, I'll just make one more comment that I appreciate the the effort to recess some of those mechanicals there because I know that's something that the planning board has been working on at Town Meeting in the past couple of years and really something that you probably see a lot more in Boston, but less so on the suburban side, but is is definitely important as we start raising the heights of some of these buildings. So I appreciate that. But any other members of the board that wanted to comment? Questions?
No, I just would like to thank the the team for coming in and explaining this and walking us through this. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It is, we normally would be in front of leadership as we were with Ten Converse and frankly, the obviously, the pandemic has had an influence. But normally, we we have very open lines of communication with all leadership in the town. And that includes people, you mentioned earlier, the question was raised about the parking garage. Well, that involves people like the fire department. So we also, we consider the leadership to be across the board, the police chiefs, the fire chief, DPW, and so forth. So we've been trying to work with everybody to make sure that we can do what we're talking about here.
I would just note, as far as the comments of our chair, that the whole idea of raising a level is not necessarily something that there's unanimity on our board. Personally, I think that you're kind of working within the guidelines and elements of form and what you have achieved here collaboratively is it is works very well in context. And I think it's it would, it it just looks very lovely. And I certainly would not be in favor of another story. I just didn't want you to think there there was unanimity on that point. And thank you again for your investment in Winchester and all of your efforts to achieve what you've achieved with this plan.
Thank you, Ian, and thanks to your team. We've got to get going. I think you can hear, at least for the project that's presented here, seems like the board is very much in support. There's consensus there unless somebody says otherwise. So I think you can count on our support and to the degree that we can help facilitate any part of the process, please let us know. It's in the hands of the the planning board now and but I'm glad to see that Design Review and Historical have concurred with with our perception of the project that this is really a home run. So please let us know and we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. And you can help us by expressing that to the planning board, please, on November 16th. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Ted. Thanks, Ian. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on, we'll jump into the warrant articles. And I know that we've got staff present here and we've got to take some vote on the motions from the board here. Lisa, there goes that alarm again, Jackie, you got.
I can't believe I didn't have it muted. I'm sorry. It's a terrible bark.
Your dog knows when you don't have it muted. It's it's uncanny. Lisa, where are we on the warrant articles? I know that there's some business that we have to take care of tonight before we move forward with Town Meeting.
Yes, so that's being finalized right now. I know Mark is also on the call. He's been working with Jenna, my office, on finalizing the warrant. So Mark, I don't know if you can assist us with
Yes.
some of the the motions the board needs to take.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. What I've done is I've provided you with a copy of the complete warrant as it went to the printer Saturday morning. And then I extracted the articles, select board articles that require motions. And the timeline is that we're trying to get the motion booklet itself completed by Thursday of this week so that we can turn it over to Mina and Art for their legal review. And then photocopy it Monday and basically get it out to Town Meeting members next Tuesday is the timeline. So what I did, as I said, I I extracted the articles that the board needs to act on in terms of motions. I've highlighted the motions that probably are going to require maybe a little bit more of a discussion, which is Article 12, which is the that's the Swanton Street parcel of land. That motion is included here. And also Article 13, which is the Waterfield Lot Parcel. With with the help of Town Council, we have two options on 13. Option A is basically to get full approval from this Town Meeting to enter into a 99 year lease. Option B would be to get approval, but with the stipulation that we would have to return to a subsequent Town Meeting for approval, possibly in the spring or the fall of next year. 14 is the MBTA project. It's an appropriation of free cash. I plugged in the amount of $400,000, which I believe includes all of the items that the board had previously discussed. I think that's what's going to stay on the meeting tonight, just to see if there were any questions about any of those items that make up the 400,000. We just want to make sure that that's the correct dollar amount to be requesting under that article. And then Article 22, which is a fairly small amount of money, but it's the money that comes in through the Uber program is about $12,000. Staff is recommending that we put it towards the Island Avenue Traffic Project, which Capital Planning is recommending that $65,000 is appropriated at this Town Meeting for the engineering of that intersection project. So I'm happy to either like start at the beginning, Mr. Chairman, or however you want to approach this.
Let's start at the beginning or whatever, you know, staff that's present needs to respond to. I I will say, just on Article 13, I have spoken with the FinCom Chair Enzo, and they have discussed it. And, you know, we we have the two options there. They would prefer us going with option B, which means that we would be working presumably with some representatives from Town Meeting and certainly from FinCom between fall and spring Town Meeting on negotiating an agreement with the developer and then kind of jointly come back with a with a recommendation. So option A is us looking for complete authority to go and work out a lease on our own. Option B is gives give some more time for evaluation on the the town side. So there's, while we've been working on these projects pretty closely, FinCom especially hasn't really had had the opportunity to to vet them too much, and they had quite a few questions. So that's I I personally wouldn't be opposed to the option B there, even though it's really asking for less, less authority than we maybe had anticipated. But we we can start at the top, Mark, if you want to.
Sure. Starting with Article 1, I think that's, that's fairly straightforward. Those are the Town Reports. And did you want to do motion by motion, Mike, or did you want to wait until we get through them all? Or how did you want to vote the motion?
I I think we can just kind of tackle the ones that you've identified here and see if there are any other motions that anybody has questions about independent of these. But I think these are more of the staff-heavy ones that we probably need to discuss.
Yes, yes, I tried to highlight the
Yeah, that's helpful. Yeah.
So Article 12, which is the Washington Street Parcel, you know, this is a article in motion with, we have a team basically together on this. It's made up of Mina, Mark Bobrowski, Rich Bowen, Jake Gonzalez, our bond counsel. So this is an article that would allow us to move forward acquiring the parcel. It would allow us to borrow up to $3,150,000 for the acquisition with the taking. That's pretty much it. I don't know if there are any questions.
Yeah, Mark, it's Susan. The 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 price or the the amount that we're asking Town Meeting to appropriate to $3,150,000, 3,000, $3,150,000 is is based on, that's the amount in an appraisal appraisal. Is that true?
That's correct. That's the appraised value that Mark Reinsterner placed on it.
Okay. Can I, can I maybe further add that the debt service to the 3 million is anticipated to be voted on and come from the Affordable Housing Trust that was just created? So it's not anticipated at this time to directly affect the budget. Okay, great.
Yeah, so I think that I know that some of this has been a little bit of inside baseball, but I I think we've been looking for the for at the Affordable Housing Trust to service the debt during the period of time where we would be putting an RFP out or going through the same process that we did with the Waterfield Lot and doing RFQ and then an RFP. And then we anticipate based on what what we think the value of the land is and the developer interest that we would be held harmless through that process if we issue a ban and the developer comes in and and then then takes the the financial liability out from under us. So it it basically gives us control over the property and the opportunity to really have a say in what the what that neighborhood looks like and helps us on the affordable housing side. But also, we anticipate working with the neighborhood there. It's been kind of a long battle there and it's, the property has been unimproved for nearly a decade and is really a blight on an area of town that could really vastly improve the the quality of life there. So any other questions on Article 12? Okay, can we move to Article 13? Any questions? You know, here we've got a few more options.
Yeah, is there, is there a difference that we would expect in timing or cost with the developer? That we picked based on having to go to Town Meeting twice versus, you know, does that delay the project?
So my understanding is it would not have any significant delay on the project. There's quite a bit of work that needs to be done in terms of sorting out a lease agreement. And there's, there's plenty of groundwork the developer can do.
Okay, then I I think, you know, option B makes sense. If members of FinCom want to volunteer additional time to help look into the finances of this, I think we would, we welcome it.
Any other comments or questions on that? And we know we do have both Beth and Brian available if there are any other questions regarding these articles.
I agree with Mr. Golubov about option B. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on Article 13?
I mean, I would only say that I I I'm comfortable with with option B as well. We've never really done one of these in this town before. So I think we want FinCom to be comfortable with the way this is being done.
Thanks, Susan. Okay, so we can, if there aren't any other questions or comments, we can move on to Article 14.
As I said, Beth, we have Beth on the line, I believe. I'm sorry, Lisa, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Is that I plugged in the 400,000. My understanding is that that includes all of the items that were previously discussed, but there may be a thought on maybe reducing that down.
Yeah, I would, it's Susan, I would just say that there's been, you know, a just, an ongoing discussion. Yeah, I would, it's Susan, I would just say that there's been, you know, a, an ongoing discussion with the MBTA identifying, you know, some things that, you know, their budget won't cover, you know, the, this has gone on for many years. And as Mike has said, you know, the longer something takes, you watch the, the cost go up and up and up, or the price go up and up and up. So in order to get to the point where we can really say this is going to get done, we, we looked at some, to identify some items that would be, you know, the, the cost would be shared and that the town would contribute. And what you got in the packet was sort of like the latest, you know, set of discussions and which has boiled it down to the, the items in the, in the last email of the, of September 8th, I think it is. And that's where we, you know, got the, the total cost of $400,000. But there are some items in there that, you know, we haven't really talked about explicitly with the board and maybe we don't need to, you know, maybe some of those are things we don't even really need to insist on. So that's what we wanted to get through tonight.
So we can certainly put in the full request and you know, should there be an item that folks aren't interested in that could certainly be extracted during the town meeting process, but in terms of, once the approval is received through town meeting, we would actually have to work with the MBTA on change orders. So the various line items that we responded to were interested in the June 29th letter to the MBTA does have a number associated with it. You know, we would make sure that we execute an agreement with the MBTA that has those as maximum numbers. They have indicated to us verbally that, I'll just give an example. So the first item that we're interested is the painting of a pedestrian tunnel. We think that this work is important. It's 17,500. Should that cost be 20,000? The MBTA said that they would pick up everything over the first quote they gave us, the 17,500. So that's one thing to note about, about these numbers. But in terms of just a general recommendation, there's already some vetting of the many things we could be contributing to. Think things related to painting, some granite edging or granite cladding, the insulation of an irrigation system. Those are all things that the staff is very, very much amenable to. It has long-term consequences to the operation and design of the building. One big question mark for the board is that one of the biggest costs is making the solar panels, actually not, I guess, making the canopies solar panel ready. So not adding the solar panels and making them able to accommodate future solar panels. That's $100,000. There's a couple of questions regarding this. So we're certainly looking at solar panels and other alternative energy for the Waterfield Lot next door. The town has also had a bit of experience with sort of sharing maintenance and sharing infrastructure development with the MBTA and it's not an easy process. So this wouldn't be an easy, easy thing to undertake. So it's a question about whether this is something that should remain as part of the article. But that being said, it has been expressed during public meetings and by, by residents that it would be a priority for us to, you know, to look at installing in the future.
Lisa, this is Beth. I just wanted to jump in and say that I think if we're looking to reduce costs, the granite edging of the planter beds is potentially one item we could drop out, which is estimated to be $60,000. I would keep the item, that's the granite cladding of the abutment. That's the new pier and the rotary and that waterfield road. But I think just adding, you know, granite curbing along the center bed is probably not something that we need to invest $60,000 in. Thank you.
What's the irrigation system? What is that for?
So I think the concern was specifically irrigation along Lareway Road. There's going to be quite a few trees planted along the viaduct that will get very little water with kind of the angle of the viaduct and, you know, the overhang of the ramps and everything. So I think we all felt comfortable that in order to have those planting areas be successful. And just given the importance you said that is along the town common, we thought the irrigation system would make sense. They have the insulation cost at 50,000 and then they have like a cost of 15,000 for design inspection administration. I'm not sure where that number came from. But I do think it's something that is maybe a reasonable cost for us to, to consider.
Yeah. I mean, currently I don't see any, any plantings or trees around that area other than just at the corner. I, I, I'm just not sure that, you know, maybe we could do plantings that don't require irrigation also. You know, as drought issues have happened in the last few years, I think, you know, this, this would be something that would give us a cost saving and also handle that issue.
So the, the landscaping plan that the MBTA created does have landscape elements all along that area. Certainly something we can discuss with them if we wanted to scale that up.
Beth, I know you're trying to mute in and out, but I, the letter that I'm looking at from June has the granite edging of the planter beds at 8,500, not at 60,000. So I don't know if there's another estimate out there for that?
Yeah. So the original letter from the T, from, I don't know if it was May or June, had, had an estimate of 8,500. And then the new letter that it came back with in September raised that cost to 60,000. I'm not sure why, and I don't think it's something that is worth investing 60,000. And I think if it was a nominal cost, I think Julie Reiman Snyder, who's a landscape architect and is on the Design Review Committee, had worked with us in reviewing the T's landscape plan. She thought that, that the trees would fare better if they were, you know, had curving around them so they weren't getting snowplows and salt and everything running off into them. But I don't think for $60,000, it's really worth that additional cost.
Yeah, I agree. That, that is a pretty high cost.
Yeah, I agree.
So if you reduce your estimate, you're, you're, I think you had, you're carrying $400,000. So you would reduce that to 340. Are you, are you considering taking up the, the cost for the solar panel? It's not even a solar panel, it's just to make the, make the canopies ready for solar, solar panels.
How much is that? I don't have that in front of me. What would that cost?
It was $100,000.
$100,000?
Yeah.
Would, I mean, would we be able to work with the MBTA to actually place the solar panels at some point in the future? Is that Lisa, is that what you kind of hinted at?
Well, given how much debate there is over things like snow and ice removal, I anticipate that their response would be you want the solar panels? You need to install them. You got to pay for it. You have to maintain it. And, and they, and we may or may not get any, you know, monetary benefit out of it. I can see them sort of barking on that as well. So, you know, from a, a climate action standpoint, obviously this, this would be a good project. I just think from a project management standpoint, it might be a bit difficult. I don't think they have anybody that necessarily will have ownership of it per se. I think if we have it as a change order, we would be dealing with whoever the contractor is to install or make them ready. And if we were able to get funding in the next, you know, 29 months for the solar panel installation, you know, we're probably going to be dealing with same said contractor after that. You know, it might be, might be a little bit more difficult in terms of not having somebody actively on site, you know, a change order to get stuff done.
Pardon my ignorance, but isn't the analogy, what we've done with other public buildings recently with solar panels where we kind of choose what sort of financial arrangements make sense, even if it's that we're not paying for the equipment upfront, but that's kind of part of the agreement we have. And then we still get some benefit as far as a decrease in the unit rate. So I guess I'm sort of lost on that. I do think that even if it's something that the MBTA hasn't done a lot of, you know,
I think the challenge is that, that we're putting it on MBTA, we'd be putting on MBTA property and that, you know, whatever financial gain there was, would not be the town alone and that we would be fronting that $100,000 of cost to make those canopies ready for solar panels. So I don't know, it, I, I think there's not a clear path forward and how we would work with the T to coordinate this effort in a meaningful way. And that just, given some of the struggles we've had to date, just has me a little bit concerned.
Right. I suspect all that, just one last comment. So does the MBTA not do this even if they're using the benefits? It still goes to, you know, still a goal and, you know, of our board and of town to try to minimize, you know, carbon footprint. So I mean, it seems like it should still be a priority of MBTA's. And if we can help them facilitate that even, I mean, it seems like, well, it would be nice if our town got some of the benefit, even if it's something that MBTA does, it's still, that would still be consistent with some of our recently, you know, stated goals. So I'm just kind of curious if maybe even just following up with them, if they do this in other towns, even if they get the benefit of it and then how it could be arranged, because there's so much real estate on that rooftop that it would also, you know, sort of symbolize, be another public structure with solar panels, which, you know, I think everybody thinks that's, you know, an important advancement. No matter who gets a benefit of it. Thank you.
I think that's, you know, definitely I'm, I'm sure it's, you know, part of what they, they would like to be moving towards with that setup. They don't seem terribly excited about it. To be honest with you, I mean, I think that their, their focus is delivering a project within their cost limit and also reduce future maintenance, you know, that's, that's their thing. So they, we, I think as Lisa said, on the solar side of things, you know, they kind of left that up to us and said, hey, if you guys want to do that, go for it. But they're otherwise not terribly excited about it unless you think otherwise, Lisa. I don't know.
I mean, I think I, if they're, if they were to state their position today, they, you can pay for it and you can maintain it and we'll reap the monetary benefits.
Yeah. My other concern is we put $100,000 upfront for this and then we spent another 10 years fighting on how to install solar panels there. And I think if we, if, if we are going to spend $100,000 on carbon reduction, which I think we should, I think there's projects where we might get better bang for the buck canopies in the parking lot at the high school, which we chose not to do because it was more expensive than on the roof. But if we were to commit $100,000 to carbon reduction, then I think that might be, it's on property that we own. So we would get any PPA benefits and we wouldn't have to work with the MBTA to install it. We can just do it whenever we want.
Yeah, that's, that's, you put that very well. I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, we could invest this $100,000 and then never see solar panels actually go up there. So I, I don't think they're very interested in doing this, at least now.
They also, you know, when we first started talking about this a couple of years ago, they had a concern about rocks and, you know, different projectiles coming off the, the trains and off the tracks, you know, hitting the solar panels and, you know, them requiring quite a bit of maintenance and not wanting to be involved in that at all. So I, I think Lisa articulated it probably the best as far as the MBTA's interest is they, they'd be happy to let us do it if we paid for it and let them, you know, reap the benefits. But other than that, they, it's, it's kind of dead on arrival. So. So it may be that we, we pull out that, that piece from that $100,000. I mean, does that seem like there's consensus with the board? Yeah, okay.
I'd say yes.
Any other questions or comments?
My other comment is the, the irrigation system. I think, you know, we can either, either provide more sidewalk for, for, or the sidewalks in the town center are notoriously narrow. So either that or provide plantings that don't require artificial irrigation.
Or would we have to go out to bid for the irrigation system? I mean, I feel like, are we, is the, he providing that, that vendor for this?
So it would be. So the town would just be contributing money towards their contractor doing the work. And then presumably the, the system would be tied into the town water system and we would be responsible for the irrigation of that area. So just to clarify that the plantings that are proposed are not on town property, they're within the MBTA's right of way. So just to clarify that kind of whole plaza area that's along Lareway Road between the road and the viaduct, a large portion of that is actually on the MBTA's right of way. And that's the area that we're talking about irrigating.
So we would meter that water and charge the MBTA for it?
We could try. I think it would probably be easier if we just, you know, did the bill and, and paid for that water ourselves. I think this was a request specifically of Jay in that area, the DPW director.
Seems like it makes sense to do. I mean, we're, there's, there aren't, you know, a ton of improvements that we're, we're adding there and MBTA is not, as I said, if you've been a part of some of these conversations, they are not terribly excited about a lot of the things that we've come up with. So.
Well, I mean, I, I think they're really just focusing on keeping the cost down at this point.
That's fine. We can keep it in if that's what everybody else thinks.
Okay. Seems like I see some heads nodding to.
Yeah, I'm okay with keeping it in.
Okay. Any, any other comments or questions? I think we've reduced that quite a bit. Okay, we can move on to the next article.
So the next article is, is utilizing the $12,235 that's in the Transportation Network Receipts Reserve Fund. Basically, as I mentioned earlier, those are Uber, are a portion of the Uber receipts. And there's a capital planning committee project that was approved, that was put forward by the town engineer for Highland Avenue. And capital planning is recommending $65,000 for the engineering that's going to get voted at this town meeting, all town meeting. And the idea is to go for construction funding at the spring town meeting. And that this $12,000 would be utilized towards that project.
Is it correct that this was sort of like the next project on the list, but there wasn't full funding left for it on the capital project? So this kind of makes up the difference and.
This, this was really, it was, I believe, and I don't know if Beth is still on the, on the call, but I believe it was her in terms of the transportation projects. I, I think it was her top priority was the Highland Ave.
Yeah, that's correct.
So capital ranked it that way. Yeah.
Right. So I had requested the full amount for design and construction, which I want to say was $160,000. Capital was concerned about funding the full amount without public input. So their recommendation was to break it into two phases with the funding of the design. phases with the funding of the design at the fall town meeting and then assuming everything goes well, funding of the construction at the spring town meeting. Um, so I think this article just reduces that sixty-five thousand, the amount, that comes out the capital appropriation by the twelve thousand, correct?
Yeah, we're, we're keeping it at the sixty-five thousand, that's for the engineering. So what it'll do is it'll, it'll help you on the construction end in the, in the spring.
Oh, okay. Okay, sounds good.
Um, any other questions or comments?
It seems like a logical thing to use to put these funds towards. So makes sense.
Previous year, we had put them towards the McCall Traffic Improvement Project.
Right.
And, you know, as, as Lisa mentioned, this was the high priority project that, um, came out of the corridor study that, um, we did, uh, that we town meeting funded, um, a year or two ago. So.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Okay. Good. Um, it seems like there's consensus in the board regarding Article twenty-two. Do we need, um, a, a motion, Mark, to support, um, the articles as presented and just identifying that it's our preference to move forward with option B on Article thirteen?
Yes, that, that would be great if we could get a motion that would, um, and I'd be happy to answer questions on any of the other articles that I didn't highlight, in the memo, just in case there are any questions or anything.
And, and we also have the revised, um, funding on, on, um, the MBTA project. I don't know if we need to identify that, um, specifically. Okay.
If you could, I'd appreciate it, yeah.
Um, I, I do have a question. I, I guess maybe the question is for when we actually vote the motions, but, uh, maybe if I ask it now, it can be included in the motion that the town moderator is proposing on Article three, which is, um, our article that we agreed to put, uh, here, is, is the motion going to include, the, how much it will cost and what the funding source is going to be for this system?
I, I don't believe so, Mariano. Um, I, I believe what this is going to do is, it's going to kind of introduce the, kind of the concept of voting electronically, but it's going to require further, action, town meeting action, because it's going to require a bylaw change. And we didn't feel that the original petition that was submitted, this is really the moderator's decision, not mine, but, um, that the original petition that was filed, wasn't, wasn't broad enough to, to incorporate any kind of bylaw changes, the way it was written. So this kind of introduces the, Peter, um, and I just got the draft today and I'm happy to forward it to the board, um, later tonight or tomorrow, so that you can see the draft. Um, but it, it kind of introduces the concept, as I said, but it does require further town meeting action on the bylaw part.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I, I just think town meeting should have an idea of, of, uh, whether it's now or whether it's when the bylaw is proposed of, uh, what the cost, of this will have and, and appropriate, and an appropriation also for the town clerk. The, the town clerk's office is working extremely hard right now with, uh, early voting and all the elections this year plus, uh, town meeting right after. And, uh, I don't think they, they have the, uh, the funding to implement something like this without an appropriation.
You're a hundred percent correct. Just to do the two nights of town meeting electronically or somewhere, and I believe it was in the twelve or thirteen thousand dollar range. And if there's a third night, no, that'll go up obviously proportionately. So it is, there's definitely a cost associated with it. So.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Yeah.
So, uh, move that we suppo, we support the proposed motion, motion language as presented, um, identifying option B for, uh, motion, identifying option B for the motion under Article thirteen and with the proposed amount for Article fourteen, for the town, uh, train station project reduced to three hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
On favor? Is it?
Is there anything else to go in there?
The granite cladding, um, sorry, the granite edging was sixty thousand.
Two forty, right?
Two forty.
Two forty.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Um, okay, so the, um, motion as a, amended is two forty instead of three hundred. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, if somebody would second that.
Second.
All in favor, take a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And yes for me, the motion carries unanimously five, five zero. Uh, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Beth, for, um, hanging around and Mark, I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
And we're just going to go down the list. At this point, we'll quickly move, um, to business item five.
Oh, um, Mr. Chair, before we, before we, uh, move on, I, I just had a question. Um, we typically, um, we've been voting to, uh, either recommend favorable or unfavorable action on a lot of other articles, including, articles put forward by the planning board. And if we're going to do something like that this time around, I've, I've read all of these articles and some of them are pretty straightforward, but I do have, some questions on a couple of them. And I'm wondering if it might be a good idea, to have, I don't know, that someone from the planning board or the town planner to come, be available on the twenty-sixth to answer our questions on some of these?
That sounds good. If we can identify some of those in advance, you know, we'll, we'll try to, um, vote favorable action on as many of the articles as we can. Um, and if there are a few that we're waiting for information on, then, um, you know, we can hold those votes later. Um, what we'll do is then, um, I, I think what we did last time, is, uh, present to the moderator, um, a list of where we have, uh, voted favorable action or unfavorable action. So, um, unless we have comments, um, on those articles that are not related to our business in particular, um, it'll just help facilitate, um, the process because it's going to be, uh, still in this remote setting. It's, it's just, you know, a, a, a little bit, um, confusing. It's not like in town meeting where we kind of get up and go to the mic and come back and, you know, so we'll vote them all and we'll present them to the town moderator in advance. So, um, and by that, I mean that we, um, shouldn't wait too long. I mean, I know that we've, in the past, we've waited to, you know, minutes before town meeting. So we'll, we'll try to take care of as many as we can. And have, um, staff available relative to those questions, um, for the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
Um, uh, moving on to business item, uh, five, uh, there's a reappointment of Dr. Michael Britt, um, to the Council on Aging, term to expire March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Um, and, uh, we typically on reappointments don't require the, um, the appointee to, uh, attend our session. So we just, uh, move the reappointment, um, if it's the pleasure of the board.
Okay, so go ahead and move to reappoint Dr. Michael Britt to the Council on Aging for a term to expire on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes for me, the motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Uh, next up for us is Halloween. Um, so, um, I, I know this has been on our agenda before and we had kind of put out some information. We've received, uh, quite a few comments, um, from, neighbors, um, in the flats area, um, that are very concerned, um, about, uh, uh, Halloween and, and, uh, a lot of, you know, people and kids and cars descending on that area at a time when, um, our numbers are, uh, moving up. You know, we had, uh, another three, uh, positive tests in our schools today. So we've moved from gray over in August, uh, up, uh, to green and then to yellow as far as, um, our positivity rates. So, um, I, I think that, um, and I spoke with Jen Murphy and, um, and heard from some members of the Board of Health that, um, you know, there, there are existing concerns. Um, one of the solutions, I think Jen has provided some changes to the infographic that we're distributing. Lisa, I don't know if you have that, but, um, it's, um, one of the, the, the strategies, uh, is for, uh, households to, uh, turn off any outdoor lights they have if they, um, and have a sign saying, see you next year. Uh, if they don't want, uh, trick or treaters to, to come to them. But it's, um, you know, it, it's, uh, um, a, a real concern, um, where we are and going into, uh, today was actually one of the highest levels, uh, in Massachusetts, in the Boston area that we've seen, uh, since we, the pandemic really started, uh, peaking. And so, um, you know, the things are moving in the wrong direction and, um, I know that I've been down to the flats in particular, for the past, uh, several Halloweens and, um, there, um, is without question a thousand people there at a time. So, um, we, you know, it, it's, you know, a little bit out of our lane, uh, to, um, you know, be, um, you know, controlling some of those regulations. It's really, the, um, Health Department and the Board of Health, but I think we need to do as much as possible to encourage people to, um, trick or treat in their own neighborhood. Um, and, uh, you know, it's, um, I, I think people need to realize that there are, um, dozens and dozens of families in the flats that, um, are, um, not going to be participating and not welcoming trick or treaters in that, uh, on, on that day. So I think it's restricting the time, but also, uh, trying to restrict people to their neighborhoods as much as possible and limiting parties. So, um, here's what, uh, Jen Murphy has come up with, um, with some of the changes. Um, so, uh, happy to hear comments. And if there are any comments from, uh, folks that are in attendance, um, please raise your hand. I see, uh, Dawn is here, Maura, some other folks, um, anybody that wants to comment, please jump in.
Yeah, I mean, I can start. I don't know if there's others that want to speak. I mean, I think, um, as I said last week or whenever we were, whenever we met last, um, you know, I think it's the most important thing is that we, it's an opt-in or an opt-out situation. And so if, if there are families, wherever they are in Winchester, um, if they don't want to participate, I don't think there's any shame in that. And I think that they should do that and do what they're comfortable with. And I think that's, that's what, um, that's the moral of the story is just do what you are comfortable with for your family. I, I think that the guidelines that we, that, um, you know, I, I talked about at our last meeting and that Jen, um, I know made some changes to, which I think were really good changes. Provide some guidance. I don't think that there's anything that we can do as a board to, you know, restrict specific, things from happening. But I think from guidelines, a guidelines perspective, I think everything that Jen, um, put in front of us is, is really good. Um, I think the timing works well. Um, I think the staggered timing with ages is a potential, um, something else that we talked about. I think, um, you know, focusing on your, your own neighborhood for trick or treating is another one. I mean, I recommended even potentially, looking at, uh, no parking on streets in the flats. And I, uh, I also provided, um, the traffic pattern, at our last meeting, which would allow for one-way walking. So on the even side of the street, you would walk towards First Street and on the other, you know, on the odd side, you would walk towards Wildwood to, you know, at least cut down on some of the passerby's. Um, and then we also talked about doing tables at the end of your driveway, creating, you know, candy graveyards where you scatter the candy, um, out, uh, you know, on your lawn. So, you know, there's different ways to do it. If people don't want to, don't feel comfortable, I completely understand that. Um, but I think I'll go back to this. I think for those of, for those people that do feel, um, that they want to do something for Halloween, um, and that their kids are really needing this, um, from a social emotional perspective, it, it's important to me, um, personally, that I think, you know, if you do want to participate, um, you know, we're obviously want you to do it safely. But I just think that our kids need this. And I think if we do it the right way, we can absolutely do it safely. Um, so that's where, that's where I stand. And I think one more thing I think is the communication is critical. So, you know, we've got really great guidelines. Jen put, a lot of work into this. I love this graphic, um, just to make sure that everyone understands what the CDC is recommending so that they can make their own decisions. Um, but I think communication is key. So I think as a board, what we can do is figure out how best to communicate our recommendations and our guidelines. And I think, you know, communicating to stay in your own neighborhood is, is one that we should, we should add for sure.
I agree with Ms. Shapiro and, um, thank you so much to the Department of Health. I'd really welcome hearing from them tonight. Um, anyone who, um, cares to contribute. They've already done so much hard work here, uh, and this, um, uh, electronic poster is so helpful. I'm kind of curious. I understand the suggestion by Ms. Shapiro about the candy graveyards, but, um, with the no communal candle, candy bowls, that's, you know, super informative for people, including myself. Just kind of curious what other options there may be, like some people might have a table like on their sort of side, you know, walkway up to their door or whatever. But then obviously, um, if you can't use a can, a commutable, which makes sense, that makes a lot of sense. Um, any other recommendations other than, um, spreading it all over your, your yard? Um, but anyway, thank you. Thank you for everyone who's been, um, working so hard on this.
Thanks, Jackie. Um, also I see that Dot Butler, um, and Pam Court, um, have their, um, hands raised. Um, so, uh, Dot, um, welcome. Feel free to, uh, unmute and comment. Um, Dot from the Coalition for Safer Community amongst many other things. Hi, Dot, how are you?
Okay, thank you for letting me speak. I think, um, Jen Murphy's out straight right now with the upticking, um, the virus and, um, Nelson Akina, who's, um, representative of the actual Board of Health, um, had to go offline. So I'm willing to speak. We had great discussion last week after, um, the proposal by Amy was reviewed. Um, the three board members as well as Jen, um, the public health nurse, uh, Morris Sullivan and myself participated in the conversation. We also had a, um, a graphic similar to what Morris Sullivan, this is the graphic you're seeing is what Morris Sullivan put together. Um, it's very similar to what they're doing in North Andover. We checked around the other towns, even Woburn is, um, restricting the times to, um, the hours. Seven. And, um, we also had a tremendous number of emails exchanged between not just the people in the flats. I don't want to throw them under the bus, the people in the community. Why are we doing Halloween? Is it necessary? That kind of thing. So we tried to come to an agreement that yes, we need our kids to feel that the holiday is special, but it can be done in special ways. Since it's a Saturday night and we're not waiting for moms and dads to get home from work, we can go out earlier and it's actually safer to go out at five o'clock than at six or seven. Um, as far as walking, I mean, we, we can talk about traffic patterns and so forth, but we've all had kids. We know how they run away from us. They're ahead of us. So much for a traffic pattern. I think this kind of takes some ownership. Hopefully parents will take ownership to what we're trying to have happen. Um, if they stay in their neighborhoods, they're what would maybe little clusters of people rather than large groups. It's all about safety and, we are in the middle of a pandemic and we have to be concerned about what our kids and the adults are going to be exposed to. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks, Dot. Um, appreciate it. Um, Pam, I see you're there too. Um, how are you doing?
Thanks. Um, I'm good. How are you?
Uh, hanging in there.
Yeah, working hard. You guys are all working hard. So I really appreciate that. And Dot, I want to say thank you to you and the, the coalition because you guys do so many great things that, that really do help keep our community safe. And please extend my thank you to Morris Sullivan for creating that graphic. Um, there are two things that I haven't heard you guys discuss about Halloween safety. And I, you know, I don't have young kids, so I don't have to deal with like the disappointment. And I, totally understand the disappointment. I'm concerned about two things in particular. One is that Halloween has been called off in several of the neighboring communities. And if you all have considered that people from outside of town are going to want to try and trick or treat, in Winchester, since it's being allowed, that's just something to be cognizant of. I don't know what you would want to do about that or how you would want to handle that, but it's something to be aware of. Um, and we have several communities like in, in Woburn, they've shut it down. Woburn's a red town. So it's just something that, to think about. Um, the other thing is, is, um, and I'm the first person to say, hey, there is no age limit on trick or treating. If, it, we don't get people coming to our house. Nobody wants to walk up our driveway to trick or treat here. But, um, because it's so steep. But, um, if I had an eighteen-year-old show up in my house trick or treating, I would be happy to give them candy. It's, you know, a wholesome thing to do. Um, it's great, but with COVID and with teens being bored. It's great. But with COVID and with teens being bored and with the increase in some of the things that we've seen some of our town teens doing, there've been some cameras catching teens trespassing in people's yards, trying to break into homes. A recent vandalism that involved a sports team and, you know, whether or not they were involved in the actual destruction of decorations or not is kind of irrelevant. It's just that teens are getting bored. Teens are acting out. They're needing to do things. And I think that this year, and I hate to say this because I really love the idea of teens trick or treating, but this year to do anything that encourages them to be out and encouraging them to be out in later hours, personally, I think that's a mistake. Just this year in particular, just because of the circumstances and what's going on. So thank you for hearing me out.
Thanks, Pam. We appreciate it. And I know that it's been discussed a little bit of the concern around the table, the Board of Health, that, and as Pam had mentioned, with surrounding communities not holding trick or treating on Halloween, that we would see more people coming to Winchester. And I mean, I just know anecdotally from prior years that that's, you know, a portion of the people that come to the flats. It's just a fantastic event, really. And it's very unique. It's, it's very safe as well typically. It's very high visibility and very walkable. So I think that's why we've, you know, I don't want to focus on the flats outside of the fact that we're, Winchester's a little unique where we do have a particular area that many of the trick or treaters do come to from all over town. So it's identified as an area like that. So from my perspective, I mean, we're, if it's even a fraction of the number of trick or treaters there that are typically there, it's a super spreader event. There's, you know, we know it's going to expose a lot of people that are going to be in you know, close contact with each other. So if there's a way for us to manage that from the select board side, I mean, there, there's only so many things that we can put out there without being able to enforce them, you know, that, but, you know, I think we can certain, certainly put out positive recommendations and guidance and cross our fingers. But if there are things like street closures or things that we can put into place, signs that say, you know, local traffic only or things, I mean, I think we really want to, I think that the, what is most helpful for this Halloween in particular is having, doing what we can to keep people trick or treating in their own neighborhood. So if there's suggestions of what we can do along those lines, be happy to hear from. But I'm, I'm concerned.
Yeah, I mean, I think that I just have to think about the, and I'm not, I think Jen, Jen would be much more prepared to speak to this, but I, I have to disagree that I don't, I don't see this being a super spreader event. I see this being, having people outside. Now granted, if it were a normal flats Halloween where everyone's lights were on and there's thousands of people, I don't think that's going to happen. There's a number of people who aren't going to put their lights on. I just don't want, you know, the alternative is, it's a Saturday night and the alternative is that people are inside together. So, and again, I'm not, we're never going to change what people are going to do. All we can do is provide guidelines that we feel will make things safer. And we hope that people will follow those guidelines. I just don't, I don't see, you know, kids being out for 45 minutes to an hour outside with masks on being a super spreader event. So I just wanted to, I just, I don't agree with that. I think it's, but I want to be really careful with the people in town. And I think the number one, I, Mike, I agree with you that recommending that they stay in their own neighborhood is probably our best bet. And I think the street closure idea is I don't know of any other towns that have canceled Halloween. I looked around online and I didn't really see too much. I know Woburn canceled their Halloween parade, but I wasn't quite sure what that meant. But regardless, whether or not they have it, there are people that do come into Winchester. So I think that that might be a good idea, at least for the flats, because I do know that there's a lot of concern there and I share that concern. So I just wanted to put that out there too.
So maybe some signage around the flats that is local traffic only and letting people know, I mean, if, if you've been there in recent years, I mean, it's, it's a lot.
It absolutely is. And I think that there's, I mean, I just think naturally there's going to be less people this year. And I also think that if there's, you know, if we, if we do things like that to let people know as soon as they come that there, this is not how it usually is. And there's a lot of lights off. Going to dissuade people from congregating, I think, I hope.
Yeah, I think the, just want to thank the, I believe Morris Sullivan's the one that put together that that graphic looks great. And I think we should join the Board of Health in promoting these guidelines. So we could take this graphic that is very easy for, for people to, to see what the guidelines are and put it on our social media channels, because I know there's a lot of questions on social media on, on what should be done. And as far as signage and street closures, I mean, anything that we can do to reduce the number of people that congregate outdoors, I think we should, we should take that.
It's Mariano. So, so we'll definitely do what we can to promote the infographic that has been put together. We can also talk with the Health Department and DPW, see if there's additional signage that we can, we can put. I mean, I, I think, you know, we probably can keep things in control with the, with the messaging and with some of the signage. Are there any other comments or questions on that?
I think that graphic, it was so helpful, but I couldn't tell from the share screen if there was more to it or not. And so if anything, maybe they might want to consider adding a couple of other suggestions to the middle column, such as maybe it's sort of obvious, but you know, sort of having a table with candy out like in bags or something like that or whatever. But if it's kind of too late and they don't have a chance, that's fine because that's helpful as it is. But you know, if anything, if they have other suggestions, maybe adding more. And then, yeah, and then we just inform, inform the public and
That graphic is the CDC guidelines from.
Yeah, I figured I saw the, I saw the bottom part. Yeah. But, but even it can be added to, you know, potentially because it's, it's nice and visual. So, but you know, because even if that's the CDC guideline, maybe we can still add to it, but maybe not. But anyway, it's very helpful. So thank you.
Oh, Morris said they can add to it. Thank you, Maura. It looks great.
Okay, unless there's anything else on that, we'll move on the agenda. So number seven, so budget outlook, I think we've discussed a little bit, but it's that time of year where we start thinking about the budget for the next fiscal year and work with FinCom and and Budget Advisory Committee and start moving some things forward. So I think there's some, you know, I've heard some concern at the state level about revenue and FY22, which is something that we've got a plan for because a lot of our budget shows, you know, headwinds around the same time. So it's really just on there for, for us to keep on our radar as we kind of move into the budget planning season. I know it's town meeting time, but we kind of hit high gear for the next fiscal year's budget right, right after that. I don't know, Lisa, if there's anything else that you wanted to add?
No, just that fiscal year 22 is still very unknown. I think a lot will depend on if there's any stimulus or aid trickling down from the federal government to the states, the states and local government. But we should definitely be putting together several different budget scenarios. It wouldn't be Winchester if we didn't have six different models, but we should definitely look at state aid reductions of even up to 20% or more as one of the possible worst case scenarios. We should obviously look at a level funded budget. But once we sort of nail down a couple of things that we're working on right now, especially the impact of COVID, some of the changes that I mentioned earlier that we're still trying to parse out, are they impacts of COVID and potentially temporary or are they more permanent trend lines? We'll put together all those budget scenarios.
Great. Thanks, Lisa. So we'll look to that over our next several meetings and we'll move on to the consent agenda here. So I think that there's requests from the chamber. And I know that Kathy Alexander is here from the chamber as well, been waiting patiently. And I think if we can let Kathy in as well. Hey Kathy, how are you? So as the first item of our content agenda, Kathy is, if we're able to connect, discuss a little bit about the parade that the chamber is going to be hosting for the 41st Citizen of the Year. And I don't know if Kathy, we can get you, we can come back to you. If there's comments.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. We got you. We got you.
All right. As you know, we, for the past 40 years, we have recognized an outstanding citizen. And this year, we were not able to have a celebration because of COVID, but the board discussed the obvious citizen that should be nominated and that would be the essential workers. And so since we can't have a dinner and we can't have a party, we thought the best way to do this would be a parade. And a parade to go by some of the places where these people have worked. So we've contacted many of the places that I think I've, I've put on your agenda. And we're really hoping that on November 4th, people stop and recognize the essential workers. We will meet up at St. Uleleas. I know many of you saw the parade that they did for the class of 2020. We're using that as a model. Dan Perrinak has helped us. But you know, this hasn't been too much good news lately, but we'd like to say November 4th at one o'clock, take an hour and stop and do whatever you're doing. Come and get part of the parade. And let's go by each of the places that work. Hopefully the essential workers will come outside. We will decorate your car or you will decorate your cars. It will be a special way to say thank you to these people that have gone far beyond what they usually do. And, you know, I just hope that citizens from young to old will really join in this parade. There can't be more an important time to stop and really say how much we have appreciated all the work they've done.
Thanks, Kathy. Really appreciate it. And and certainly it's.
I know I sound a little bit emotional about it, but that's how I think, you know, it's sort of, there's been so much talk about this and people get distracted about so many things. But folks, please take your time, take an hour out of your day, join in this parade to really recognize the outstanding citizens for 2020.
Thanks, Kathy.
Register online so we know how many people are coming. We will, you know, be able to organize the parade up at St. Uleleas. And thanks to many of the people of the chamber, including Dot Butler. Really hope that this will be a fun way to show our appreciation.
Thanks again, Kathy. It's a, such a great thing to honor our essential workers. And I think you're right that we do lose sight of how much is going on behind the scenes. And so it's really a great thing the chamber is doing. Let us know if there's anything that you need the town for to support the event. Happy to help in any way we can. And we appreciate it and will take a motion to approve. I know, I don't know if there's questions on the second part of the consent agenda, but certainly the, the chamber's request.
So Mike, just on the second one, I believe the dates for the where they want to have that dumpster out in front of that, you know, right by Bank of America as they finish up that project, the dates are from November 1st to December 1st.
Okay.
So I moved that we approved the consent agenda, including the parade to honor the essential workers as Citizens of the Year and the staging permit the construction in front of the Bank of America.
And that's from November 1st to December 1st?
Right.
Second, and with appreciation to Kathy Alexander and her team. Thank you.
I'll take a roll call vote. All in favor, Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Okay. So that concludes our regular agenda business for the evening. Thank you, everyone. We do have unfortunately an executive session to go into hopefully briefly. So unless there are any questions or comments, we'll take a motion to move into executive session. Not to return to.
Okay, so I move, we, I move that we go into executive session for the purposes of discussing reputation, character, physical, physical condition or mental health rather than the professional competence of an individual under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, and to adjourn from, from there.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes, but is there a separate Zoom link?
I think we're just going to hang around.
Okay. Yes.
No, there isn't.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. So we'll, we are in executive session and we are closed out of our public session.